All right, item number one is we're here tonight for a budget workshop and proposed fiscal year 1920 operating budget and capital improvement project budget presented by Rob Embertagma, Ben Moody, and Diana Langley. Welcome, and thank you.
My pleasure. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, at first, I'm going to review the general fund operating budget. Next, Ben will review the capital improvement program budgets. Lastly, Diana will review the water and wastewater rate updates. The proposed operating budgets for the water and wastewater utilities do not include any proposed rate increases since City Council has not yet made a decision in this regard. So what you see in the operating budget tonight is a status quo. Before getting into the details, I'd like to recognize the efforts that the City Council Budget Subcommittee put into this budget process. City Council formed an ad hoc budget committee consisting of Mayor Harris and Councilman Shaw. They devoted a great deal of time to this budget process, meeting with each and every department head and hearing the pitch that was made for the budget request, why the request was needed, and the background and history related to it. Then they met with the interim city manager, myself, and Spencer Morrison, the city's accounting manager, to deliberate all those requests. It was a great deal of time and effort spent by them, and I think I can speak for them when I say safely that there's a lot more requests that were needed than money's available to fund those requests. So they tried diligently to deliberate those needs, and what you have before you tonight is based upon that. Thank you both very much for the time and effort and the commitment to the process. I sincerely appreciate it. It was time very well spent. I think it was a great effort on your part, and it was an interesting process for staff. We learned a lot along the way. With that, much appreciation. Thank you. Let's get started. This slide shows you where the city's general fund dollars go. City Council's priorities have always been public safety and infrastructure maintenance. That's where almost three-fourths of the city's general fund budget dollars are spent. The percentages on this slide change only slightly from year to year, which is what you would expect since these are the areas that continue to be the long-term priorities. This shows you graphically the changes in the city's total general fund revenues over time. There are 10 years of actual historical results, the fiscal year 19 projected total, and the fiscal year '20 proposed budget. You can see that proposed budgeted revenues for fiscal year '20 are expected to increase to the highest level ever. This does include a $500,000 proposed transfer in from the city's pension stabilization trust fund to make an additional discretionary payment to CalPERS. I'll be discussing this in more detail a bit later. Suffice it to say that actual revenues are $44.6 million. The total is inflated by the anticipated transfer in, but is still an all-time high for Yuba City. And please stop me as I'm going through if there's any questions. This is a similar slide with 10 years of actual history, the FY '19 projected, and proposed fiscal year '20 budget. It includes salaries and benefits, the lighter shade color, and then materials, supplies, and services, the darker shade color, along with the total for the general fund. The difference in proposed FY '20 revenues of $45.1 million and expenditures of $44.6 million represents the current budget surplus of $420,200. Next, we will review what has changed since we adopted the fiscal year '19 budget. And one more addition is that there is $500,000 of additional discretionary payments for CalPERS included in the fiscal year '20 total appropriations as well, to be discussed a little bit further. This is a summary of the changes as to what occurred between the fiscal year '19 adopted budget and the fiscal year '20 proposed budget. We had an operating surplus carried over from fiscal year '19 of $301,356. Revenues increased a total of $2,653,100, including that $500,000 that I mentioned previously. Salaries and benefits increased just under $2.4 million, and I'll show you what the details of those changes were in a later slide. Materials, supplies, and services increased by $198,900, and capital acquisitions actually decreased by $45,900 from the prior year, resulting in a proposed operating budget surplus This shows you the historical net operating surplus or deficit. The city's had a surplus since fiscal year '14 through '18 and is projected to again in fiscal year '19. Vacancy savings is what has kept the city's results of operation in the general fund positive since fiscal year '14. It's significant and worth mentioning that in fiscal year '14, the surplus from salary and benefit savings was $1.2 million, and '15 agreed to $1.6 million. '16 was $1.9 million. '17, $2.4 million. And '18, $2.7 million. I think it's important to tell you that because this year, the projected surplus, as submitted by all the departments as part of the budget process, is only expected to generate about $750,000 in savings from salaries and benefits because vacant positions are being filled and we're not seeing as much turnover as what we have historically in more recent years. So this is in alignment with the reduced number of vacancies as HR continues to place a large emphasis on hiring and filling positions. prudent fiscal management dictates, though, that we be cautious with one-time savings and only allocate it for one-time expenditures. Each year, I like to revisit this, the unmet financing needs previously identified, and then I have updates to where we're at with these unmet financing needs more currently based upon the last several years. These were originally presented to City Council in November of 2015, as identified by city staff and City Council. The construction of the Tierra Buena area park facilities are funded in the proposed CIP on the next slide, so we've included them as an update as far as progress made. With our existing resources, we don't have the financial wherewithal to completely address, resolve, and incorporate all of these items into our budget. However, with City Council's leadership, we have made progress, which I will discuss next. I think it is imperative that we revisit these each year as part of the budget process and discuss what steps we've taken to address them. Now, there's a lot of information here. I'll walk through it, and please ask questions if you have any. To address the city's CalPERS unfunded liability, the city established a pension trust fund with an initial contribution of $2 million back in 2016. That came from the previous economic stabilization reserve fund. We added $330,000 from the fiscal year '17 surplus, added an additional almost $612,000 from the fiscal year '18 surplus, and then we used $500,000 last fall to make an additional discretionary payment to CalPERS in fiscal year '19. We are recommending a similar payment in fiscal year '20. And again, I have more information on that to follow. The city's UAL, our unfunded actuarial liability, has declined $3 million per last year's actual actuarial reports released in August of last year. The total UAL was $70.3 million per CalPERS actuaries as of June 30, 2017, and there's a delay in their actuarial reports, so they were dated June 30, 2017, but they're received by the city in August of '18. So that is the latest and greatest information we have available. The city has prioritized very limited general fund infrastructure dollars and has included funding of $60,000 for playground replacement. I know that we reallocated $60,000 of CDBG funds to that effort, so I'm expecting one of the proposed changes to the budget as presented will be to disencumber those general fund dollars and reencumber them as CDBG dollars. $260,000 for Blackburn Tally field lighting replacement, $1.5 million for harder parkway, park and bike path, $112,000 for improvements to building new grounds, $1.1 million for Fire Station 2 remodel project, $150,000 for Sam Brandon restroom replacement, and $140,000 for police department CIP workstation modifications. Beat six, startup costs for police services. The annexation process was not completed, and the population count is insufficient to trigger the transfer of revenues from Sutter County to the city at the present time. As mentioned, the CIP budget includes a total of $1,538,000 in funding for construction of harder parkway, park, and bike path, partially using grant funds and development impact fees. As it relates to economic development initiatives, the city has provided funding for a formation of the Tourism Business Improvement District, and the city's budget includes a 1% TOT set aside for ongoing support of the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association, which is 10% of what the city receives.
I do have a question on that item. I know that the Lodging Association, the tourism folks, came and spoke to us, and we talked to them about going back and seeing if they got additional funding. Have we heard anything back from that at all before we consider this request?
I have not.
Neither have I.
Darren may have an update for us.
Can we get an update?
... if they have not received any commitments.
Have they sought any?
I know they've...
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor. Councilman Bumgarden, when they came before us, we asked them to come back in June. So the follow-up to your question, are they slated to come back and re-present to us in June with an update?
Next council.
Next council meeting. Thank you.
Procedural question, then, through the mayor. We could conceivably hold off on this item until we heard from them, as I was under the impression we were going to?
Absolutely, we can. We can, at the present time, remove it from the proposed budget and then add it back if council... Here's their presentation, and the five of you decide that you want to add it back in.
So how do we proceed with something like that? Do we take this all at the end? Do we do this one by one as you present them?
That's a really good question. We've not gone through this level of detail. I would say let's take it as it comes and let us know, so then I can add it to my draft budget staff report as the modifications that were recommended by City Council, if that works for the five of you.
So do we do that in the form of a motion? Do we do that in the form of an interest? Or do we do that as consensus? Here he comes.
This is actually a workshop, so you can't give any formal direction, but you can give preliminary guidance. So if there's three of you that would say, hey, this would be something I'd be looking for in a future budget, you can do that this evening. It does not need to be a formal motion, and there shouldn't be a formal motion taken this evening.
Councilman Bumgarden, are you done?
Well, I've put it out there. I'm not in a position to consider this until I've heard back from the tourism and the lodging folks, as I was under the impression we were going to.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear. I would concur with that, so you have my support to that one.
Bean counters. I think that's the intent of the workshop anyway, is we're just reviewing everything in that regard, and we're going to come back later.
Absolutely. I'm giving staff guidances and directions.
So, yeah, the same thing applies to everything that we're discussing tonight.
But I would like a wrap-up at the end, so that I know what to bring back to you next week.
This topic, apparently, for sure.
Okay, perfect.
And the flagpole comes to mind we're going to get to and things like that.
And the CDBG funding for Sam Brandon.
Yes.
Do you have a follow-up question on that? So there isn't... I cannot recall the amount that we were considering for this particular economic development initiative.
I can tell you, because I expected this question to come up, it is $127,460.
$60 to $127,000?
Yeah, $127,000... I'm sorry. $127,460.
Oh, $460.
Yeah, and that's 10% of what the city's TOT revenue is.
Correct, because that's what we actually now remember. Okay.
So it changes from year to year based upon what we're budgeting if it's approved by council for inclusion.
Yeah, I would like to review that at the end as well. Thank you.
And one final question on that. When they presented, they were also going to return to us the seed money that we initially started with, I believe, was $53,000. Did they pay that to the...
They did. And lastly, vehicles. Staff has analyzed the amount of funding available in the vehicle replacement plan for the general fund on a vehicle-by-vehicle basis. We've met with the fleet maintenance supervisor and reviewed the city's entire fleet, estimated the remaining useful life of each vehicle, and the estimated replacement cost. Based on that information, the best estimate of what we should be setting aside every year is $1,125,000. Instead, for fiscal year '17 through '20, we've only set aside $800,000. So even as I'm pointing out that we have a budget surplus next fiscal year, we have more demands for these resources than what we have resources available. And you'll see that because we come up short on some of the vehicle funding that we're trying to budget for, inclusion in this budget as well. Moving into our largest revenue changes, I mentioned that the total was $2,653,000. I've included them here in order of magnitude, with property taxes being the largest. Finance is projecting a 4.3% increase in property taxes for next fiscal year. This growth estimate is supported by the city's property tax audit firm, HDL Companies, and trends in property values. This generates an additional $664,600 in revenues over what was budgeted for fiscal year '19. Some of the increase, about $115,000, relates to fiscal year '19 actuals expected over the budgeted amount as well. The new 2017 SAFER grant is expected to generate $454,700, an increase of $363,100 over the fiscal year '19 grant revenues, which only included reimbursement for five pay periods because of the expiration of the 2014 grant. Hotel motel surcharge revenues are budgeted at a 2% increase over the amount expected to be received in fiscal year '19. The amount in excess of budget for fiscal year '19 is $146,400. So you're seeing the compounding effect there of the increase from one budget year to the next of $171,300. Sales tax is expected to generate a net increase of $160,900, and I have two additional slides that'll show you more information on sales tax in just a minute. The budget for fiscal year '20 includes a projected increase of 2%, but is contrary to what HDL is telling us that they're projecting throughout the state. They have actually told us that they're expecting a 1.5% decline. So we will be watching sales tax very closely every quarter. The difference between a 2% increase and a 1.5% decline for Yuba City is almost half a million dollars. So it makes a really big difference for us. And that said, our sales tax base is also very heavily reliant on auto dealerships, very well with our auto dealerships. They're expecting that to level off and decline as well. So that's an area of industry that they're warning us to watch carefully. Building permit revenues are projected to increase by $52,000 next year. CSAG revenues, which are property tax revenues, are expected to grow by $45,100, which is a 4.3% anticipated increase, the same as regular property taxes. Real property transfer tax is expected to grow by 2% or $39,900. All other items combined result in a reduction of revenues of $27,000. Cost allocations increased by $1,085,700. This includes the proposed $500,000 transfer from the pension stabilization trust that I'm going to get into more details later. This is a breakdown of all the changes in cost allocation reimbursements. As we showed council as part of the Budget 101 presentation, finance prepares an annual update to both the citywide cost allocation plan and the public works cost allocation plan every year. This shows you the changes resulting from the fiscal year '20 cost allocation plan updates. Streets and roads, TDA fund allocations went up $192,200. Wastewater went up $142,800. Water, $130,200. The public works allocation to CIP projects went down $84,300. Landscape lighting districts up 68.8... Probably say 68,800, so there's no confusion there. Traffic safety fund, $50,000. Stop fund, $50,000. RDA, $6,500. Other, $29,500. And then the increase from the pension stabilization trust fund, proposed transfer in, $500,000.
On the... Can you go back, please? On the landscaping and lighting districts, that's a district, so those property owners in that district, will they be charged additional in order to cover those costs?
Those are pass-throughs for work that's conducted by city staff to those districts, and those costs will be passed on. But typically, there's reserve funds within the districts, and we have typically CPI inflators, so the increases that are passed through property taxes is very minimal.
Okay. And that could be our responsibility in the future. We could raise the fees to cover those costs, at least to break even, because, you know, that's a negative, correct?
No.
Oh, it's additional revenue.
It's additional revenue to the general fund. Yeah, the negative is due to public works cost allocating to CIP projects. There's a shift there where they're working on more water and wastewater projects, so those cost allocations went up versus the CIP projects went down.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. This shows you the city's historical sales tax revenues, 10 years of actual history, projected '19, and proposed '20. I like to remind you that revenues were higher in fiscal year '16 by $824,000 due to the one-time revenues that had to do with the end of the state's triple flip. Without that irregularity, sales tax has steadily grown since the decline in fiscal year '10. The current year projection represents an all-time high for Yuba City. This is the gross amount and doesn't include the net expected offset of $455,200 for the city's payment to Sutter County, which is included in the budget document under the terms of the Master Tax Exchange Agreement. As I mentioned previously, the estimated increase is 2%. This assumes that the city continues to see steady growth in our sales tax and does not slip into an economic downturn. As the number-one revenue for the city, it generates approximately 1/3 of our general fund dollars. We watch sales tax very diligently.
Through the mayor, I just wanted to clarify. The majority of our sales tax is auto sales? Is that correct? Or is it property or is it mixed? What is...
Sales tax is across the board from any taxable sales, which includes everything except for food items typically, and there's a few other exceptions. So any consumable goods. And a lot of our big-box retailers generate a great deal of sales tax as well, but auto dealerships are very great at generating sales tax. That's why agencies like to have auto dealerships in their community. That said, we do well with all of our retailers. We look at all of them. We get a top 100 list every quarter from our sales tax consultant, but we definitely watch the bigger ones very carefully.
And which are those?
It's all confidential information. We're not allowed to disclose it. I'm sorry.
Okay. So if you were able to identify... So I guess I'm guessing. So the auto sales is a big number, and secondly would be just myself going to Rayleigh's and buying groceries, or is it just the retailer, restaurants, or what?
Groceries are not taxable, but food establishments are. We have a quarterly sales tax newsletter that we send out, so I'll make sure... We just got the more recent ones last week. I'll make sure I get that in everybody's box.
Okay.
There's a good graph on there that shows what share, as a percentage, of the city's sales tax each quarter is coming from each group of industries. And they aggregate industries. There has to be like more than five, or they can't disclose them, more than five individual businesses.
Okay.
Because the idea is that it's a retailer's private information as to what their gross sales are.
I see. Okay, so that's where the confidential...
That's why we're not allowed to share, yes.
I got it. Okay. Just because of the trend that it's looking as we're generating more and more revenue, but it's also concerning because there's more expenses as well, so both sides.
Right.
And the conversations of a downturn seems to be a common conversation that we have because we just don't know sometimes.
Right, and I just feel like I have to inform you that, yes, I've budgeted a 2% increase, but if we start to see a decline, I fully expect that I would be coming forward before you and saying, hey, we need to start holding the line. If we have vacant positions, we probably need to leave them vacant longer, that sort of thing, and giving you recommendations for how we can tighten the belt.
Okay.
This slide shows you the impact of the current year sales tax trends compared to budgeted. Shows the most recent four quarters that we have... Our contribution for retiring healthcare funding increased by forty-three thousand, three hundred. Only departments retiring with normal service retirement until they are Medicare-eligible age, and the police portion of Pemca are included in these. Other salary and benefit increases netted out to an increase of twenty-five thousand, three hundred, and then the five-hundred-thousand-dollar additional discretionary payment, also referred to as an ADP to CalPERS from our pension stabilization trust, are included here for total salary and benefit increases in cost of just under two-point-four million dollars on a general fund-wide basis.
Excuse me, mayor, we're having a little bit of issue with recording the program, can we take a five-minute break?
Sure.
All right, we are back, almost.
All right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Be careful what you ask for. I'm about halfway through.
That was projected healthcare cost increase eighteen, nineteen. We're doing the budget for nineteen, twenty. I was informed that the healthcare costs may, are predicted to go down. Have you have any information that for nineteen, twenty, that's going to be going down on our healthcare costs?
Not yet, according to Natalie, that information will be out shortly after the beginning of the fiscal year. And we included a four-percent growth factor for half the year, which is equal to two-percent for the whole year, not knowing, historically, the average increase has been around seven percent. The last two years with the reductions for the Blue Shield Plan have really been an anomaly. I would love it if it did. You're welcome. This is a summary of the personnel reclassifications and changes contained in the fiscal year twenty budget, includes the old position and the new position if applicable. They are summarized by department, and I'll walk you through them. Included is a community coordinator position for the city manager's office. The deputy city manager, economic growth and public affairs, has been deleted from the proposed budget. A customer service rep, one-two, is added in finance. This is to replace and make it a permanent position for the limited-term position that we've had for the past two years, but we've been unable to keep people, we've had significant staff turnover, folks leaving for more permanent positions, and that's the same experience that HR had as well. Finance requested reclassification of an administrative analyst position to an accountant, one, after the resignation of our analyst. This generated a small amount of savings since vacancies were budgeted for at mid-step, and the former employee was a long-term employee and was at top step. IT has information systems tech, one-twos, that are flexibly staffed, but the two is at a higher level, the ones are ready to advance to the two level, but we had to request additional budget funding in order to accomplish that. And HR is requesting elimination of the HR technician, one, and instead requesting to hire a permanent HR tech. And lastly, on this slide, HR requested the reclassification of an HR technician, two, to an administrative analyst, one.
Through the mayor. So discussions on job descriptions, stuff like that, adding stuff, do we discuss this right now, and then, or do this at the end?
We can discuss it now.
Okay. I'm going to bring this up, because I did a little research also, on the deputy city manager, economic development, one. I know that we're putting funds in economic development, talking about, thinking about hiring an economic development firm. I did a little research with some other communities, talked to them, the economic development, yes, they give money to businesses, they can do that with us here in the town, within our community, they can give us the same services, and just across the river, they were saying they wish that their economic development was as great as ours. So I'd like to make some changes, make some changes, and somehow, we're taking fifty-five thousand out to the economic development to put it back into this department, and our new city manager is going to need somebody that helps him with our communities, that are coming, we don't want them to come in blind, or, you know, he needs some, he has somebody confident that he can ask and know the community, and somehow, I don't know, we were going to budget for the growth in public affairs manager, but I'd like to put something, it don't have to be as much as it was before, but we got fifty-five thousand off the bat, and decide what the public growth, the growth in affairs, what we're going to do, and put some money in there to the air, we can make another title, or make the growth, or make it something, and we could keep that there, and that could help our new city manager. That's just comments made. Like I said, I did a little research, the economic development can give our businesses money here, and they really didn't bring, go out and search and bring businesses to those communities. The business went to them and knocked on their door, which was great, and then, like I said, they got loans, and they could be given to us also. So how do you want to do that, just make a something, and then we can discuss it later?
I can make a note of it, and we can go back and visit it later, unless there's more discussion that council would like to have.
No, just for clarification, your suggestion is to take the fifty-two thousand we were going to use to become a member of the local EDC-
Yes.
-and do what with it?
Put it back, it'd be back into this department, we'd keep the economic development here, and then add some additional, you're talking about a growth in affairs manager, so it could be growth in affairs slash academic development, and make it whatever that employee was going to get, and make it appropriate. I don't know, I'd, just say, let's just say, let's say budget a hundred and five thousand, I'm just throwing something out there, just budget a hundred and five thousand for economic development slash growth in affairs manager, something like that, is what I'm saying, but take the money back, and then add some-
So that's not the total fund, it's just fifty-two thousand of the position?
Well, I think we have to pay more on that also, not just the fifty-two thousand, we have to pay additional money throughout the year on that, on economic development also, it's not just fifty-two thousand for the year, for them every year, I think there's additional money involved also.
Okay.
But I know, I did a little research on it.
And what'd your research reveal?
Well, it's, they, like I said, they give money to businesses in the community, which they can do the exact same to us, but they didn't necessarily bring businesses to those communities. The people did come to them, and they let them, they let them on their way, they helped lead them, and we have that here.
Okay.
And you want to, and you want to add, you know, two more to our economic development anyway, you want to add two more, you know, on our board? Yes, we did. So I just wanted to bring that up and see what we can do.
All right, I'm just seeing, I'm trying to see if you're suggesting there's fifty-two thousand does not cover a full position.
Right, but-
So I was wondering where your, the balance of that money you're talking about, where you had mine?
Well, we don't know what we're budgeting for the growth in public affairs, do we?
That is the title, the deputy city manager, economic growth and public affairs.
Right.
The new position is the community coordinator.
Oh, excuse me, coordinator, I'm sorry, community coordinator, I'm sorry, the community, so is there been money established for the community coordinator?
Which is less than half of that.
So thirty, twenty-five thousand, or?
No, less than half of the full thing, I believe, I don't remember the specific number.
I think it was ninety-one thousand, total salary and benefits for the community coordinator.
Which is going to, was on my hit list later on, this discussion, anyway, is that whole position as well. They just haven't got to it, I may as well get to it now, so put that on our list to propose and remove that.
Okay.
Did you have something, sir?
Yeah, through the mayor. Robin, correct me in this, if this is not the time to get in it, because I can, I remember the numbers off the top of my head from going through this for several days with the mayor, but to address some concerns right up front, looking at the overall benefit to the city, additional funds, as you will find, have been left in the administrative office to help with some of those duties, in addition to the new community coordinator position, possibly, on top of the potential of, you know, becoming the only member that's really a part of the economic development, that's not a part of the economic development. And to address your comment on businesses, businesses, as far as large businesses, don't come to a community because someone knocks on their door, they have a matrix that they look at, and they seek out cities based upon the metrics of what meets their demographics. People have asked for a long time, well, why, you know, does the city not have a Red Lobster, why do they not have this, why do they not have that? It's because our city hasn't met the demographics. So to get those national chains, we've got to meet the demographics first, but to address your immediate concern, yes, as she gets into the numbers, you will find the subcommittee allocated some additional resources to help, and I'll wait and let you go over the number, I roughly remember what it was, but then also on top of that, there was the community coordinator, so all of that was taken into consideration, and still with that, there was huge significance savings in a budget that is very, very tight, so that was part of that.
And I would like to let council know that I misspoke, the total cost of the community coordinator with salary and benefits was eighty-one thousand, not ninety-one, so I was out by ten.
Yeah, I thought it was seventy-something, but yeah. So it's considered a huge significant savings?
Mm-hmm.
No, what is considered a huge, that whole package before was well over two-hundred And the savings in the budget, we were looking at potentially, it was about a hundred-and-fifty thousand, a hundred-and-twenty thousand.
Twenty-five.
It was, that's huge, that's six figures in a budget that's tight, and meeting the needs of the community. We'll discuss it a little later, thank you.
Through the mayor, yeah, through the mayor. So looking at, I believe, page thirty-nine of the proposed budget, I just want to clarify on the amounts here, just to be clear, on the economic development, am I on the correct one, forty-one, twenty?
You are, that is economic development.
Okay, so the total salary benefits adopted for this year, the position that we're discussing at this moment is a hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-nine?
That's correct.
And so this community coordinator position is a new position that, just based on the process, is being recommended, it's a new position.
It's being considered by the council, yes.
It's being, yeah, it's a new position that I'm just learning through the process as well. Have we had any discussion to determine the differences between the position that hand to the new position, what did we base the decision that a community coordinator can meet the needs of what we are searching to do in this community? In the economic development area? Am I getting that confused? So if we're considering, if the recommendation is to delete this particular position on the economic development, right, based on a tight budget, as was stated, a hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars for this position, but a new position is being proposed for a community coordinator for ninety-one thousand, eighty-one, thank you, eighty-one thousand, which includes salary and benefits, and I'm assuming that's a full-time position? So in my view, economic development is critical and important in order to look at, you know, the proposed revenues that we need to generate in this community, so it's unclear to me, by eliminating one position and then developing another position, how is that going to help us with the economic development component?
I don't think the presumption was for that position to help with economic development, if I recall our discussion, that's why it's a completely different title.
And I, that's why-
Right, and that's why we would join EDC for fifty-two thousand, have the other position, which is unrelated to economic development necessarily, that's not their primary function, it's not to supplant.
Gotcha, okay, so what was the proposed vision for the community coordinator?
At the time we discussed it, would be some, somebody who helped with the city manager, but not necessarily the management-level experience, there would be, I don't, I want to avoid using slang, but someone who had a variety of different tasks that would fall under a certain purview and umbrella, not the least of which should be support of council at uncertain events, support of the city manager, some lower-level events, and assist with other community outreach endeavors, along with some clerical functions.
Okay, is that similar to something what we have right now with the police department? We have a-
Somewhat similar, a little broader, but somewhat similar, yes.
We do have that position right now, correct? Okay.
Something, I don't know what he calls it, what it's called, but there's-
Community person coordinator, I think.
Something similar, similar to that, but a little broader.
Are they similar in salaries, the two positions?
I believe so.
I, I'm-
I don't know.
I don't know, to be honest, so that's why I'm asking.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe so, I believe that it's a much higher salary.
This one's much higher?
No, this was much lower than what the other was. If I may-
Yeah, it would help.
Expand just a little bit, the term that came up when this was discussed, was thinking of, this would be filled by an, like an intern-type position, this person that's finishing up their bachelor's degree, or between a bachelor's and master's, possibly in political science or something, to give them an understanding of government, to fill a gap that would be needed in the administration of the city, to assist the city manager, not so much as being, for lack of better words, you know, a, an assistant to the council, I mean, they would help us with whatever we need, but it's to facilitate the duties in the office that doesn't need, you know, a management authority over that. So that's what the thinking was behind it, and where you bring in the economic development component of that is very simple, when we started looking at that, what are we getting now that we can't get from the EDC and at a huge savings? And they just don't weigh themselves out to try to do it in-house, was the thinking behind it, and we could reallocate some of those resources and accomplish meeting the needs of the city through the city manager's office at a much more cost-effective manner.
I mean, I think efficiency is important, and being able to budget funds in a well-thought-out manner is equally important, and I see what you're thinking in the long term, but I also believe that we are in the process of hiring a city manager, and so it would be really, I think, helpful, or allow that new individual maybe to have some decisions in how his administration or hers, I, let me say, let me say it in a gender way, the person's decision, to allow the person to decide on that. I just feel like, I don't feel comfortable moving around this whole administration piece, I could see with the finance and HR, because our, you know, our executive team is making those decisions, and so this other particular part, I really just would like to allow our city manager to make that decision, that's, so I'd rather hold off on that particular part of it, and see how things propose after the person is hired, because things could change. And if you haven't, I will just say that workforce and economic development is very, very important, one of those priorities, and I, you know, Ben and I were talking about this today, so this is important to me personally, because I am learning and recognizing that without a strong- a strong development and also economic, that also we have a group of commissioners that are part of this as well, because our commission is part of the economic development group of what we have going here. But if we were to go with EDC, which I like EDC as well, how is that going to unfold with our commissioners? And how is that going to be the long-term vision? So those are just a few thoughts that I have, but I really would like to see the city manager perhaps have the final decision on this particular change.
Good point. And just to reiterate, this is also the position I just mentioned, and I was going to suggest that we pull back on altogether because of the money savings. But you bring up a good point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And through the mayor, also on that, on your professional services, you, to cover this position being eliminated, you bumped it up a hundred and four thousand dollars in professional services.
What did I do?
Well, we made the, we haven't done it yet, but we made the decision to bump it up. It went from forty-two to a hundred and forty-six. And professional services, that would be them doing that for us. So we're only looking at a.
Some explanation behind that that I'm not recalling.
Okay. Well, we'll discuss this at a later time.
Yeah. I move forward. It's right here. These are the increases for economic development. I was going to get to the material supplies and services changes next. So maybe if I back up and.
There's an explanation.
Okay.
Then we'll get there. But I do have that for you.
Thanks.
Trying to show you everything that's changed from one year to the next. The next slide. Development Services requested reclassification of a plan's examiner to a building inspector one-two. This generated a small amount of savings within the budget. Public Works Facilities Maintenance requested the addition of a building maintenance worker one-two. We had that many years back and haven't in recent years since the downturn. They requested that position be added back. Two new police officers were added, one for patrol and one, and the other as a homeless liaison officer. A request was made to reclassify a patrol officer to a K-9 unit officer. Wastewater requested to reclassify a plant maintenance mechanic to a plant maintenance senior mechanic. And lastly, wastewater requested a new limited-term operator and training position.
You're first. I was going to say, too.
Through the mayor. On the, and this is just a question, just so I have the knowledge. I know that we're adding a police officer, and I appreciate the opportunity to submit questions earlier and got them addressed. But I still am curious as to, we're adding one police officer, perhaps the chief can tell us what, what this one police officer is going to mean to the community. Not the homeless officer, but the additional field officer.
It's going to allow us to plan for the future as we're, as we're in Walton Annex Station, but it also allows us right now to have another backup officer.
So in essence, this is, this is a position, it's an overstaffed position because you're going to have the need. It's not just an additional body just out there. You have a need to have this person that kind of understands the departments, goes through the training, and then becomes a resource for you to use where you plug and play.
Correct.
Okay. The other question I have is on.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, this is Terrell. Can we have the people speaking in the audience come to the podium? Otherwise, it's not recorded on the program.
Yes, I should have caught that. Thank you, Terrell.
Sorry.
Don't trip.
While he's walking out there, I'll clarify that the request was for more. It wasn't like, they were saying, we just need one more police officer. That was just what we approved. They would probably take twenty more if we let them have them. I know I would if I was you, but that's what we approved. Yeah, appreciate that.
That's correct. So just to reiterate, we wanted to have another additional officer on patrol, that we're going to actually work patrol on a shift that will help us cover during times of injury as a backup officer, when officers are on vacation, we wouldn't be paying overtime. So there'd be some savings in there on one hand.
Appreciate the answer.
You're welcome, sir.
Building maintenance worker, new position, again, in a tight budget and just trying to understand completely when we're adding new people. And at the, at the risk of sounding like I'm an advocate for outsourcing, is this a candidate for outsourcing? Is there a full-time need for this building maintenance worker one and two?
Yes, there is. Sorry.
The question, if I caught it correctly, was, is there?
Sorry.
The question is, is there a need? Absolutely, there is a need. There are seventeen buildings. We have a supervisor and we have three full-time custodians, but there's not the person to do that maintenance work full-time. And so what's happening is a lot of that consulting is going out for HVAC cleanings and different things that we believe could be done in-house to ultimately, I don't know if it's going to save money, but it's going to be more efficient with not having to have our supervisor constantly coordinate with the consultants, but actually have somebody to be able to do the repair work and timely.
I guess my question comes to, then, you guys have investigated, just humor me with this and make me feel better. You guys have taken a look at the cost of, you know, continuing to outsource versus pay and benefits and everything else for a full-time worker to do essentially the same work.
Absolutely. And then also, we've looked at that at the custodian level, also to see what the limit term express, what we do for special projects where they could come in and we don't need them, and there's, there's not enough work for a full-time employee. And with this position, there's, there's enough work for a full-time employee.
Appreciate the explanation.
Don't leave, Ben.
I'm just, I'm going to add on that real quick. There's also benefit to having an employee, since custodians are often in the buildings after hours. So you have added benefit built in security and accountability as well.
Through the mayor, Ben. Between six to ten years ago, because I've been gone six, at the plant, you were a mechanic, and then when you got your grade-three qualifications, you automatically became a senior mechanic, automatically. It was, it was automatic bump, because that's, that's how it was down there when I was down there. So things have changed. I mean, it was like, it was like an automatic thing back in the day, so it changed, and that's why we're adding senior mechanics. I mean, you could have three guys down there, as long as they got their three maintenance, they were automatic, you'd have three down there if, if they got it. So has it changed in the future? That's why we're asking.
It's changed where we have the supervisor, so the mechanic supervisor, the maintenance mechanic supervisor, if I'm saying that right. And then there's one senior, budgeted, and then there's the mechanics underneath them. And what the request is, is that with the off-site ponds and the lift stations, that basically has two crews going, where we have a full-time crew that is handling the lift stations, the, with the pumps and the maintenance of those.
Correct.
And keeping up the ponds.
Correct.
And stormwater ponds, in addition to the ponds across the, that we have two seniors. So that, that one senior will be overlooking the offsite, and the one senior will be onsite at the plant. And then they would rotate every, at a certain time period to make sure we're cross-trained and working.
Okay.
But, but no, they do not automatically bump up. We have one budgeted position currently.
Okay. Thank you, Ben.
I'm proposing, too.
Thank you.
With that, this is a summary of all the material supply and services changes, and I've got detailed slides that show you what's included in some totals here. The fiscal year twenty ongoing requests from the departments that were included in the proposed budget, total four-hundred-and-nine-thousand, six-eighty-one. The one-time request, meaning that finance will automatically pull it back next year, total forty-eight-thousand, three-hundred. We reduced the contingency amount by two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for what was added last year as a one-time parking lot holder for negotiations for fiscal year seventeen, eighteen of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. We had a contingency account for, it was called contingency MSNS, because we had cut everybody's budgets down to the bone back during the recession. So we had an account where we could go to that if somebody really got into trouble and we'd cut budgets too much. We could pull money from there to add to people's budgets. Now that we've added money over the last two or now three years to material supplies and services, we don't need to keep that money there, so we reduce that as well to help balance the budget. Internal service funds increased a hundred and seventy-three thousand. I'll show you a breakdown of that in just a minute. Animal control costs went up thirty-five-thousand, three-seventy. That's related to the city's sixty-nine percent share of the seventeen, eighteen negotiations cost, along with an increase in fiscal year twenty of sixty-three-thousand, five-hundred. Other items that were all less than five thousand dollars netted out to a reduction of about forty-one-hundred. Recreation programs declined twenty-four-hundred. And the fiscal year nineteen one-time MSNS increases that were included in last year's budget were two-hundred-and-five-thousand, nine-twenty-three. Finance automatically removed those at the beginning of this, this fiscal year's budget process. So the total increase in cost for MSNS, just under a hundred and ninety-nine thousand. And I have detailed information coming next, if there's no questions here. This is a breakdown by department. Shows you exactly each and every line item that was requested by each department. And frankly, the amount of time committed to this process by the city council budget subcommittee in reviewing all these requests from each and every department. I won't go through each and every line item, but I will scroll through them slowly so that you can see what was requested, why it was requested, and it adds up to a very big number. So I couldn't really break it down and say, okay, I'm going to show you anything over ten thousand or anything over five thousand, because the number that I would be saying this is everything below five thousand would still be a really big number. So I'll scroll through these somewhat slowly. Please let me know if there's anything here you would like more information on. Slide includes development services and the police department. Next, the fire department and economic development. This was the slide that you were asking about previously for the changes in economic development. Yes, professional services went up significantly. These are the items that were included in that. And this is the last page, community services, administration, and non-departmental.
Through the mayor, the administration, professional services reduction. Thirty-five thousand, was that just because there was thirty-five thousand available in that and then a reduction to it?
That's correct. The city manager's budget previously included items to give flexibility for team building, for bringing in, for example, Juan Lopez, where we might have a need on a citywide basis, but you weren't sure what department to put the budget dollars in. It was included in the city manager's budget, and oftentimes, those funds were not spent.
Let me go, let me go to, I'm trying to find the admin budget in here.
For the city manager?
Is that, is that the city manager? Oh, thirty-eight. So it was originally, I guess, based on the actual prior year, thirty-eight thousand, then it was fifty thousand and reduced to fifteen thousand. That's the reason.
Yes, that's correct.
The change, okay. On the previous slide. On the economic development piece, on that public engagement outreach, was that already included in, in that previously, or is that something new, too?
No, that's something new.
I'm not sure what we're going to be doing with that money. Oh, 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 those different amount, okay.
I may as well say that on the, her question was the public engagement outreach. Is that what we're talking about, event sponsorships for, is that the, that same category?
I don't believe it was. Let me look at my notes here.
Okay. I think, because I think we have more than that in there.
It's fifty-five thousand, I thought.
No, it was like forty-two.
Oh, forty-two.
I think.
Through the mayor.
Yeah.
When we were talking about this in the subcommittee going through the budget. We were looking at a lot of the different opportunities that is currently done through the city manager's office. George does a great job with things, but we were seeing other opportunities that could be leveraged and more technology possibly leveraged to bridge the gap between the city and the residents. And so that's where you also get down into the Facebook promotional ads and different things. It was all about exactly what it's. Public engagement, public outreach. It wasn't the fundraisers.
Sounds similar.
That, that's, I mean, the others seemed pretty clear to me, Councilman Shaw, that I was just more so with the public engagement outreach and not, is there something that you'd like to add to that?
Yeah. Councilman Boom Garden asked some questions via email, so it helped us get ready for tonight by doing our homework and researching some of the things.
A little layup there.
That you might be asking about. We included twenty-eight thousand for public engagement outreach, public relations consulting, graphic designs, videos, twelve thousand, flash vote survey software, fifty-nine-hundred. These were all things that were requested as part of the city's economic development initiatives and public outreach and engagement. Facebook media promotions, twelve hundred, and print media, forty-eight hundred. And those are all detailed up there as well. But it was all part of the initiatives.
And follow-up through the mayor. If I remember correctly, as we were looking at this, and we looked at kind of the potential realignment there of the city manager's office with outsourcing the EDC and really getting the, the city manager's office engaged with the public, it went kind of hand-in-hand with the intern. And now here's the money to fund the different projects that kind of all came together, if I'm, if I'm remembering correctly. It was along those same lines.
Yeah. I, and I, again, I think that I really appreciate the fact that you're, you're looking towards engaging more of our community, which is important and valuable. The change between, I guess I'm just feeling the sense of what we're reducing funding in the city managers for professional development and then moving some of that, I believe, I don't know where the funds are coming from, but I'm guessing, yes.
Not professional development, it's professional services for outsourcing and contracts.
Thank you.
Professional services.
Thank you, thank you.
Just to clarify.
No, thanks, I appreciate that. My eyes are not always straight, but the contacts are sticking. So, and then we, you know, now in economic development, we have this twenty-eight thousand. So it, it seems, I think mostly what I'm considering is who would be managing that particular line item? Is it the economic development group, or is it the city manager? So I'm kind of not sure where we're heading in the direction with these, with these particular additional new proposed, you know, positions or, or actions or line items. And so again, I, I'm almost tempted to say, look, let's leave the proposed for the city manager and hire a really great one, an awesome one, that we can all support and then move towards, you know, that person perhaps might come with some amazing new vision and ideas that, that would. that would ascend us to amazing economic development." I know, I used a big word there. Anyway, thank you.
While we're on the topic, Robin, before you start, where is the... For the sponsorships and whatnot, where would that fund, that figure be?
Those are already included in the budget in our non-departmental account.
I only had it dog-eared in my copy at home, and I can't find it on this fresh one.
Let me turn on page 10.
I know you're keeping a rolling list, and I know we have several applications, requests for funding. Still, I would like to work that into our conversation next week if possible.
Okay.
What the requests are and then the allocation that we have designated.
The review, community contribution requests.
And the fund itself, yes, thank you.
Those were on page 86 of the budget.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, is that 86? Thank you.
It is.
All right, thank you.
According to that information, next week, we can be prepared to discuss it. This next slide shows you the detail of the one-time MSNS changes, the material supplies and services that were added on a department-by-department basis and what they were for, knowing that when it goes into the budget, it's one-time in nature and it will come back out next fiscal year. Breakdown between Human Resources, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and Community Are there any questions on any of that? These are the changes in the city's internal service funds that were significant in dollar amount, including vehicle maintenance, vehicle fuel, service charges, liability insurance, the Technology Re-Replacement Fund, and the net of all the other internal service funds in the city. Worth mentioning that the city's internal service funds are set up to recover costs. They're not set up to make a profit. Each year, the charges to the departments generate revenue into the ISF Fund, and then it offsets the costs coming into the fund. And we look at every fiscal year to make sure that we have adequate reserves within those funds, but not significant to the point where we're charging departments more than is needed or necessary to keep the fund whole and in perpetuity.
Through the Mayor, I feel like I should know this from having worked with this budget, but I don't. And so, vehicle fuel charges, are they broken out separately in each one of the departments?
They are. Each department gets a charge and allocation based upon their historical fuel consumption and finance budgets based upon the dollar amount we expect to be paying for fuel next year. And the ISF Fund total cost went up 76,572 for next fiscal year, and those charges are dispersed out to the departments.
So, I'm probably jumping way out here because I made an assumption that the vehicle O&amp;M charges, which are dramatically higher in most every department, included fuel. Is that not the case?
There's... Fuel is separate from the O&amp;M charges.
Okay.
It's included in the same line item in the budget, though. Is that correct, Lynn? Because they roll up? Yeah, they roll up together in what's presented here. We have detailed line items that are much lengthier, as you probably recall.
I do recall. So, I guess the question is, and I'm just looking at one department here, and their costs went up significantly in vehicle O&amp;M, and there was several of those, so I'm not picking on any one department. Does that include the fuel costs, then?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah, because they're rolled up in there. Part of what I think you're seeing there is, in previous years, we had some vacancies within fleet maintenance, so we didn't have to charge as much for services because we had some reserve fund balances. This year, we did not have any reserve fund balances left in that fund because they were fully staffed. So, we had to pull the full cost through and charge it out to the departments.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I have a question through the Mayor. I'm still... This part is not clear to me. So, the vehicle fuel charges, this is a total of the whole, all departments, or is it separate?
This is how much it changed for the city's general fund.
Increased, increased, okay.
And we break it out separately, so you can see fuel charges, which are, I would say, somewhat beyond the department's control. Police is going to do patrol, they're going to have fuel costs, same thing with fire, et cetera. But then the vehicle maintenance for the cost of fleet maintenance shop, we show that separately, so you can make the distinction between the two.
Okay. And the vehicle maintenance, there's an increase. So, in the vehicle maintenance is... Oh, that's different than the replacement fund. Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And yes, vehicle replacement is for replacing our fleet. Next, the capital acquisition requests for the general fund.
One second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just did want to acknowledge, I sent a bunch of questions ahead of time, and I do very much appreciate the time and effort that went in from not only finance, but my understanding is you sent these around to the department heads as well for the answers. So, I do appreciate that. Very thorough, and they did make a lot of sense to me. So, I just wanted to take a moment on the MSNS and the internal service funds. Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you for getting those to us in advance, so we could give you comprehensive answers. Thankfully, I tab about 90 words a minute, so it really didn't take that long to reply.
I wish I read it 90 words a minute.
You shouldn't have told me that. I've got some jobs for you. 90 words a minute.
Uh-oh. Carol, help, what did I do? Thank you. Can't let people leave, I'm not done yet. Okay, capital acquisition requests. This shows you, for the general fund, we included a flagpole for Pluma Street for the replacement. My understanding is that may not be necessary. We may be able to remove that, to be determined. The police field operations, adding another K-9 unit at a cost of 10,000. As far as vehicles and vehicle replacement, this is a list for you of what we're requesting to replace next fiscal year. And Councilman Boomgarden asked and inquired why our SUVs all have different prices, because we have different needs for those different SUVs, whether it's a police SUV being used for patrol, whether it's being used by an investigator or a K-9 unit. You can see that that's more costly because of the equipment we have to put into it versus patrol vehicle. I'm replacing two of those, an SUV for the Fire Department, Streets Division Pickup Truck with utility bed, and an Infield Groomer for the Parks Division. I think it's important, and now's a good time to mention, that we have 348,580 of proposed replacement vehicles. We're short in the Vehicle Replacement Fund by 132,212, as far as the amount of money set aside for replacing those vehicles versus the actual cost to replace them. So, part of what I'm recommending and bringing forward to City Council for evaluation next week with budget adoption includes taking funds from this year's surplus and front-loading it as of June 30th, so that as of July 1st in next year's budget, the dollars will be there to pay for these capital acquisition items. It's something that the city's been doing for several years now. The Technology Replacement Fund, we have lots of acquisition items here. Network switches, Sasa video surveillance, UVA City PD video surveillance, server, domain controller, firewall, the police handheld and patrol car radios, 42,800. The police and fire radio system uplift, that's going to be an end-of-life here soon. We did not have any money in our Technology Replacement Fund for that, so the Budget Subcommittee decided to use instead some funds that we had set aside for replacing the laptops and the patrol cars and the fire engines, to use half of that to help fund this purchase, so it's not entirely short by the 186,000. In addition, firewall and phone system for both the water and wastewater plants, if I'm remembering correctly. Let me look at my notes, because I might be wrong on that. I didn't have any further notes on that. I'd have to look at the details.
You had it.
What's that?
You wrote it to me.
Okay.
Water treatment and the wastewater.
Thank you, that's what I was remembering, but I like to fact-check before I say something out of turn. So, thank you. My notes paid off. The total amount here that we did not have funds for, for that as well, was 268,800. So, that will also come forward as part of the budget resolution request to set aside current-year dollars to fund these purchases as well. These are the utility item catback requests. Does the City Council have any questions on any of these items? Pretty detailed.
Lots of vowels.
Lots of vowels.
Yes. Yeah, spell check had fun with this.
Through the Mayor, is this additional, or is this part of the upgrades of the wastewater plant? All this stuff, is this additional?
This is additional, yes.
Thank you.
And total citywide, just over 1.1 million. So, we're investing in ourselves and our fixed asset replacements. Probably one of the ugliest charts in my presentation. It's our CalPERS blended rates for both safety in red and miscellaneous in blue. Shows you that they do continue to go up. We are projecting a dip in fiscal year '24. I had to check that as a reality check to make sure that, yes, it does actually, is expected to go down slightly for one year. This is stating our CalPERS retirement cost as a percentage for every dollar of city payroll. Safety is in red and miscellaneous in blue, as I stated. It's a blended composite rate of all the tiers that we have within the CalPERS system for safety tier one, safety tier two, et cetera, et cetera, and PEPRA. And we know how much we have in payroll dollars for each of those separate tiers for CalPERS. So, we go through and we determine what our projected future cost is going to be based upon the normal cost that CalPERS gives us as a percentage of payroll, and then how much we have to contribute for our unfunded liability. We're able to then get that total, divide it by the payroll dollars anticipated per the budget process, and give you a percentage of payroll dollars and project that forward. This does not include any salary increases anticipated. It's just if we had status quo and everything stayed the same, we are still going to have this much in increases from CalPERS. So, I think it's important for City Council to see this every year. This year's budget, again, does propose that we prepay our CalPERS UAL payment in July and take advantage of the interest rate discount that CalPERS allows us. I know this slide is really busy. It's updated and includes the oldest information in red from the 2014 actuarial reports. That really tall blue line at the top was from our 2015 actuarial reports. Then that dropped down to the purple line from the 2016 and the green line from 2017. So, as much as CalPERS gave us information, it's gotten better since then, but it's still really, really a very large increase. Results in a 75% increase from fiscal year '16 to the projected amount for fiscal year '25. So, not quite double, which is where we started out, back on the blue line. It's gotten progressively better. The information we have to give to you is only as good as the information CalPERS gives us. And I think we've managed our liabilities and IOUs to CalPERS by doing a variety of things, including trying to combine some one-time salary increases through the negotiations process with ongoing salary increases, so that we haven't had as steep of a line as what CalPERS has projected, based upon the projections they put into their actuarial reports, which is an increase every year for every single employee. So, this is where I show you the magic behind the numbers. This is how much finance is projecting for surplus for this fiscal year, based upon the revenues that we project, a 43.6 million for the current year. Grants, which are included in the revenues, that'll either be spent or carried over, so we deduct those. And then the projected expenditures, which don't include grants, are 42.3 million, a projected surplus of just over a million. And from that, we need 317,000 additional dollars to be allocated because of... Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm speaking out of turn here. The 317,000 is something that I'm asking City Council to consider as part of the budget process. We set aside one-time funds within the general fund many years ago. Was originally set aside for economic development initiatives, and the only funds that have been expended from that was to... Let me look at my notes here. I don't see it in my notes, but I do recall we spent some money to set up the T-bid downtown. It's like 123,500 to the Chamber of Commerce, if I remember, in fiscal year '15 or '16. And that's the only monies that have ever been spent. The funds were still sitting there as a designation within the general fund until... And they're still there now. We said last year we needed to leave them for a potential match for the SAFER grant. Well, now, we've built in the SAFER grant expenditures and the SAFER grant revenues. Both sides of the equation are built into the budget, so I don't see any need to leave those one-time funds set aside. If we don't roll that into fund balance, then we have to come up with 300,000 extra dollars for our 15% Healthy Cities Reserve set aside. So, I'm requesting that City Council take the one-time designation funds and roll them into the unallocated general fund fund balance as part of this budget process, which does help offset the next line, which is what I started to speak to first, the increase in the Healthy Cities Reserve of 305,138. That's 15% of the increase in our appropriations for the proposed budget, not including the 500,000 one-time payment, because that's not really ongoing appropriation, so we don't need to set aside 15% for that necessarily. So, those two kind of offset each other. Then the other items for Council to consider is 398,086 for the negative police and fire DIF balances. This would be the fourth year that we would be setting aside funds, basically taking general fund money and putting it into the Development Impact Fee Fund to try to offset the negative balances, where we over-expended police and fire for the Police Department expansion and fire station four and fire admin building being constructed, when we didn't have sufficient funding within the DIF funds. And then the shortages that I already described with technology replacement and vehicle purchases, leaving available funds for one-time purposes of about 266,000 from current-year resources, if we were to do everything that I'm recommending. If there's no questions on that, I will move forward to talk to you about what reserves we do have. So, the city's general fund reserves, our Healthy Cities Reserve, as of June 1, 2018, was 6.2 million. We would add 317,594, rolling it right into the city's undesignated general fund reserve fund, if City Council supports my recommendation of getting rid of the one-time designation funds and rolling it all into regular fund balance. And then the projected remaining surplus from fiscal year '19 of 266,274, which would bring our fund balance to about just under 6.8 million as of June 30 of '19. Carol, I'm sorry, I think I'm doing that. Thank you. Our Pension Stabilization Trust... Our pension stabilization trust, I wanted to show you the history of this. $2 million was deposited when we first opened up the trust. Came from the Economic Stabilization Reserve Fund from fiscal year 15, 16. We had investment earnings from fiscal year 17. We contributed $330,000 from the end of that fiscal year. Shows you the balance as of June 30 of 17. Some more investment earnings from fiscal year 18. The surplus from fiscal year 18 that was deposited to this fund showing the June 30, 18 balance of $3,065,000. We withdrew $500,000 last fall to make an additional discretionary payment of $500,000 to CalPERS. And then investment earnings have been very good this year. $189,000 with a projected balance as of June 30 of about $2.75 million. Thank you. I just hope it doesn't decline before the end of the fiscal year.
Through the mayor, I have a question on this pension. Is there a percentage that we're supposed to keep in this trust or is there anything?
This trust can only be used for CalPERS retirement purposes. It can be used for anything else.
Right.
But no, it's dictated by the city council for what we can afford to put in it. And then if we decide to take money out based upon council's authority, we withdraw the funds and pay it to CalPERS. The problem we have is with a $70 million debt to CalPERS. They're charging a 7% interest on that. So, it's in our best interest to try to whittle it down as quickly as possible and get it paid off.
Yeah, I could see that based on the other charts. Excuse me, so I was just wondering, I mean, we couldn't consider going up to a million dollars if we wanted to?
We could, but I always look at reserves with a five-year plan in mind.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to take and send too much in one year because if the city got into trouble with an economic downturn and we had a hard time paying next year's CalPERS increase, we've got a savings account we can count on. So, if we had to, we could pull from this to help make the increased payments to CalPERS. If next year goes up, say another $700,000 and revenues are going down, we can rely on this savings account to help us.
So, I mean, based on what you... The previous slides I'm looking at, we gave what? Has it $500, $600? And was it $500?
Yeah, those are all right here, what we've put in. And then we took out $500,000.
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry. Yeah, $300, yeah.
Last year. And I'm recommending that we do that again this year. Because if we take $500,000, this is all general fund money. If we take it and we pay miscellaneous liabilities down, we get more bang for our buck. I've got in my presentation, it's over $800,000 by the time water, wastewater, fleet, and Sasa contribute as well.
So, this is actually, well, with the exception of last year, we gave $611,000.
Yeah, that was from leftover surplus money from the general fund at the end of fiscal year.
Councilman McGarden's phone over here.
My iPad.
His iPad. I think it's recording me. So, couldn't we go up to $700?
We can. Let's get to where I'm talking more about that.
Okay.
And...
I'm just asking, I'm not making this final.
No, 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 it's a great question. I'm also paying more. I just don't want to see the city get into problems later. And because if the general fund contributes $500 towards the miscellaneous plan, all the employees on a citywide basis, water, wastewater, fleet maintenance staff, and Sasa staff would contribute a portion as well. If I remember the dollar amount, it was about $837,000. So, it creates a significant dent in reducing liabilities and future interest charges. Okay. The general CIP fund, we start with $4.768 million available. We already have $2.7 million allocated to projects. The proposed general CIP fund budget per fiscal year 19, '20 allocates another $1,149,500. And Ben will be discussing CIP with you next. I recommend setting aside a designation for unexpected emergency needs of $500,000. That's kind of the just do not touch in case you have an emergency, you need to take care of something, it gives the city resources to do so. And then that leaves an unallocated remaining balance available of $414,400. And this is the general fund share of the vehicle replacement fund. Does not include the dollars that are held sort of in trust, if you will, for water, wastewater, et cetera. It's just the general fund share. The projected balance as of July 1, $7.786 million. Vehicle replacement fund is budgeted to receive $800,000 from the general fund. We have purchases that total $348,580. We're proposing to transfer in as of June 30, the unfunded amount of $132,212, which would bring the general fund's share of vehicle replacement to just under $8.4 million. It would be higher than that because there would also be interest earnings. But it gives you an idea of where we're at with the general fund vehicle replacement fund. This shows you the city's long-range financial forecast for the next five years. It includes the actuals through fiscal year 18, FY '19 projected, FY '20 budgeted as proposed, and then future year forecasts. But what this does, not factor in as a downturn in the economy. I always have to throw that caveat in there. This projects revenues continuing on as they have historically. And to give you an idea of the CalPERS increases that we're anticipating, this includes in the expenditure projections, $755,000 for fiscal year '21, CalPERS increases. Just under $666,000 for fiscal year '22, CalPERS increases. $525,900 for fiscal year '23. A reduction of $76,500 in fiscal year '24. An increase of $342,000 in fiscal year '25. So, that's built into this model, knowing that we have to pay CalPERS first, so to speak. This also includes an ongoing increase of 3% in the city's property tax growth for the out years, 2.5% for sales tax, 3% in franchise fee revenues, 4% for hotel motel surcharge revenues, et cetera. This does not take into consideration an economic downturn. So, as much as it looks like we have a balanced budget, and we do, that's subject to change based upon the economy if it takes a turn. So, when that does happen, we will need to react and reevaluate our priorities to avoid deficit spending. I stuck questions in here, but I also have one more slide for wrap-up items for discussion and consideration. I think we have a lot more probably to discuss than the items on my next slide. But these are all items for council consideration as it relates to the draft staff report related to the budget that I would be bringing back to you next week. I created a separate slide just to make sure that what I bring to you is direction that you want me to implement from a budget perspective. So, the question items, we're funding the technology replacement cash deficiencies of $268,800 and the vehicle replacement fund deficiencies of $132,212 from the existing June 30, 19 anticipated surplus. Whether to continue the Developer Impact Fee Fund loan repayment, advances of 10% for the negative balances for police and fire. Whether or not to roll in the reserve for operations into the regular fund balance unreserved. And then whether or not to make an additional discretionary payment to CalPERS. Total for all funds was $837,808. So, yes, we get more bang for our buck.
So, you're looking for direction on these items or just these are the...
Direction on these items and then items that you would like me to bring back as part of the budget staff report for modifications to the proposed budget as well.
Is this the time... Through the mayor, is this the time for me to ask my questions?
Yes, but I have one if you don't mind, because I know you probably have several. Robin, this money that's part of our surplus, particularly those lower two, right, the $500, the $317K? You're requesting that we do that with some anticipated surplus, correct?
No, the $500,000 would come from our pension stabilization trust.
Okay, transfer it to the CalPERS from this, because that's already... So, that's already required to go towards CalPERS anyway.
It absolutely is.
How about the $317?
The $317 is money that's sitting in the city's general fund.
Okay.
And it's designated one-time monies. So, it could only, as it was set aside by council previously, it was to be used for one-time purposes, whether it was an economic development initiative, a match for the SAFER grant, for example. And the reality is, is if we do not... Direction. If we don't roll it into fund balance, we have to come up with $305,000 to meet our 15% reserve requirement. So, what I'm saying is if we roll this into fund balance, it matches our 15% reserve requirement. Why have it as a separate designation of money just sitting there, not benefiting our community? And council may want to leave it there and say that we might have one-time needs that come up down the road.
I'm thinking negotiations is what I'm thinking of because we're way short on where we'd like to be. But if it's pay me now or pay me a letter regarding the $317 versus the $305 anyway. So, it's already a wash. So, it's not a legitimate source of...
Right.
All right.
But by rolling that in, I'm matching what's needed to hit our 15%.
All right.
So, we're not having to take it out of current year revenues.
Right. So, what we're looking at is a $266, not...
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Through the mayor, may I, Mr. McGarden, follow up on one of his questions before you go? Something you said on the ADP for CalPERS, the $500. You said that was required. That's not our current liability. You're just talking about the additional payment that we would possibly be making. That's what that is. And I want to make sure I've got it correct and we're clear. It's not a required payment. This is... Okay.
The only requirement is that we can only use the monies in the pension stabilization fund to pay CalPERS. But what that means is we could also reduce the current budget by $500,000 and say, okay, we're going to clamp that to pay CalPERS so that we're not having to cover it in our budget. Which is why I don't advocate sending them more than $500,000 because I want to save that as our savings account for PERS in case something down the road where it's needed.
Right, I just wanted to make sure we're clear because I could swear I heard you say it was a required payment and I meant...
I may have, and if I did, I'm sorry. Thank you for the clarification.
Another thing, just to make sure I heard you correctly. Once we put money into that PERS account, it's there to stay.
It can only be used for PERS.
Right, so there's no... If we hit a bump in the road economically, we can't pull that out anymore, we're done.
No, you can still pull it out, but it can only be pulled out for PERS.
But for other stuff, we're done.
If you needed a million bucks, you could reduce how much we budget for PERS by a million bucks, pull a million out of there and send it to CalPERS. It can only be used for PERS.
Once we put it in there? So, if we increase the amount we put in there, we're trapped in that pigeonhole?
You are. But as long as you send it to PERS, then if you owe PERS, I'm just going to throw out a number. Let's say it's $9 million. You owe PERS $9 million. You could budget $8 million and pull a million out of there and send it to PERS. And we've met our obligation to PERS for the year, but you didn't have to do it all through the operating budget.
Right.
This is a nice savings account for the city.
No, I agree with that. My point is, I'm looking at if we hit an economic downturn and we need $500K, but we took that extra $500K, put it in this account, we can't pull it back out to use it for something else. That's my question. Okay, thank you.
Okay. You might want to follow me page by page here.
Okay.
So, page nine, I just have... Most of these are just questions for understanding. On page nine, there's an item called recology rate stabilization. Can you help me understand what that accounts for?
I received your email this afternoon, so I printed out the current balance. As of today, we have $20,465 in that account. And I told Carol I was going to put her on the spot because she knows more about this than I do to try to explain it. Sorry, Carol, you're up.
I appreciated the heads up, actually. So, the easiest way for me to explain this is to read the section of the staff report that we took to council last August, which we did every year for the term of the 2011 contract. So, in 2008, the Regional Waste Management Authority members established a rate stabilization and capitalization fund as part of recology's solid waste approval process. The fund was established to reduce volatility in year-to-year rate adjustments and fund one-time capital improvement costs. Use is guided by the rate stabilization and capitalization fund distribution guidelines attached. And I can provide you guys with a copy. So, the fund has worked as intended. Previous dismersions from the fund have supported following projects. Levy Road improvements, and this was with all the regional waste jurisdictions. We paid a portion of the costs and they did as well. So, the total cost for Levy Road improvements was $128,803. Required intersection safety improvements, $505,021. Landfill gas control at the closed YSDI landfill, $284,000. South area stormwater improvements, $230,000. Feather River Organics compost pad stormwater improvements is $326,000. And Green Waste Diversion Program, which was $683,000. So, a total of about just under $200,000 was spent through this fund. And through that, we also kept the rates stable so that one year the rates didn't go up 3%. The next year, they stay the same. Then maybe after that, they go down like, you know, 5%. So, everybody was paying the same rate until it reached a certain point and then we were able to raise it. So, does that answer your question?
It does.
I have more if you want more.
I can come see you. I just... I was just trying to understand what that line was about.
I think with the agreement that will be in place in 2019, that will probably not go forward.
Okay. Thank you. Next is page 11, and this is where I get to thank my colleagues, Councilwoman Shaw, Councilman, excuse me, Mayor Harris, for their work on taking the time to go through this budget with city staff. I think it's important to note, and this is more for information than anything else, under the legislative and administrative grouping of accounts, they were able to lower that by 10.76% from last year. Significant cut. Finance went up only 3.19%. Development services up 3.62%. Police, 4.84%. Fire, 3.03%. Public Works, 3.7%. I guess the one question I have is HR, not to pick on you, Natalie. HR went up 13.24%. And I'm assuming, I think I have the answer, but I would be interested to know why such an increase in HR?
A lot of it... Natalie might want to add here, but a lot of it is the MSNS that we added for these items here.
I assume a lot of it's because we're negotiating with eight different units right now. Okay.
Yes, so too, you answered your own question. It's primarily do these negotiation costs. So, particularly this labor relations, the lead, that's for IEDA. And that was part of their cost, that was part of their contract. If we go into negotiations into next year, that's the cost to negotiate.
Okay. Also, maybe you can take a moment just to let us know more about Project Arrow?
Yes. So, Project Arrow is part of our target learning, is kind of our encompassing program for target learning, which is primarily those costs are for training. So, it's part of... So as part of target learning, we bring in trainers during the year to educate our employees.
Okay. Kind of a succession planning thing?
Yes, yes.
All right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
And this might be, page 12, this might be one of the things the mayor was looking at, had is just understanding what non-departmental, the budget number is significant. So I'm trying to understand what encompasses non-departmental.
Anything that we cannot assign to a department or that historically has not been assigned to a department? Page in here. Let me find that page, and then I can try to walk you through some of it. Thank you, Lynn. I'd have been a while finding it. 83. So it's actually, the bulk of it is on page 86. And it shows the breakdown there, 27,000 for advertising, 20,000 for professional services, 170,000 for professional development. That's the citywide pooled travel and training account that anybody that is funded through the general fund goes to a conference or does any travel or training, it's paid for out of this account. It went down 30,000 this year, because we shifted 30 from the pooled account back to the fire department. And dues and subscriptions, that includes SECOG dues and subscriptions. Help me out, Terrell, I know you manage those. Do you remember what some of the other ones are?
League of California Cities, SECOG, Chamber of Commerce, those type of organizations. But League of California Cities and SECOG is the largest amount.
And I'm looking at the increase by my non-departmental to see what the increase is in other materials and supplies. We added 5,000 for community events and 1,400 for community contributions. Those are included in other materials and supplies.
Well, that was, one of my questions is, we went from 54,900 to 105,900. Seems like an awful large jump there.
I can help with that, too, if you'd like.
Thank you.
So the biggest part of it was, we consolidated the Fly the Mission, which is the, it's 55,000, which is what we've been spending on leadership development, the academies that we send. We call it up the hill to, so it's pretty much the leadership development portion, and that goes along with that with Amistad, Juan Lopez, professional services.
Thank you, Terrell.
Councilman Boomgarden, that was actually one of the questions we had going through, and some of the variances you might see through the budget is Fly the Mission, for example. It was so scattered throughout the budget that we sat there and said, how much are we really spending? So we asked staff to try to consolidate as many places as they could, so we could actually see what we're spending on these types of events.
I understand. Thank you. On page 19, we show a position for Sabuca. And I'm wondering-
That can now be removed.
Okay. Only a few more. On page 26, Madden House rent, it's shown as a zero. I thought this was the year we were going to start getting rent.
You are correct. You got me on that one.
Okay. Well, I'm not trying to get you.
I know, but that's okay. I can own it.
Okay.
So we'll add that in as an additional revenue. The rent is supposed to be 1250 per month, and we set aside half of it for maintenance-type, big-issue repairs into a CIP fund, but I will add the budget amount for the other half, which is roughly $7,500.
That just might offset the 8,000 for the maintenance, right? Page 34, this is our page as city council, just trying to understand what the $2,900 for professional development is allocated for? Want to know how I'm going to be professionally developed, I guess.
Want me to answer that, too?
You're on a roll. Thank you, Terrell.
So it's, professional development is for meetings and things like that. So it's the cost of, when you're having business meetings, closed session. So the, then I think part of it is for when you give recognition to some organizations and things like that. So a special event, if we're wanting to do something like that, if it comes up, like when we had, it's a couple of years back, but the California Chrome event and some of the other events. So it gives council a little bit of flexibility in case something comes up during the year. But, and the primary portion of it is for closed-session-type meals and things.
Okay. It would seem that if we were recognizing groups, that should be part of a different line item than professional development. I guess I look at professional development as, what are we doing to further our abilities as a city council person or something? So in your effort to try to consolidate things to where they may more appropriately land, that might be something that we should consider.
We can move that to other materials and supplies. It seems like it'd be more appropriate there.
I think, a lot of these, we've already addressed, so bear with me a little bit. Okay. Did that. A lot of these had to do with vehicle ONN. That's the only reason I, and then we talked about the non-departmental. That concludes my questions. And again, I want to thank Councilman Shaw, Mayor Harris, and you all for your preliminary work on this. I know there's going to be some more questions to be addressed, but appreciate the patience with the questions, both the ones I submitted and those tonight. Thank you. And thank you to staff for participating and giving me the answers as well. Appreciate it.
With the pleasure of the council, would you like to move forward with the CIP budget presentation and the water and wastewater rates, and then come back to this and tell me what items you would like me, that you recommend, that I bring back for change as part of the proposed budget? Or would you like to go through the proposed budget and let me know how to modify my staff report so I can bring it back accordingly?
I'm good either way. I know we gave you a punch list already. Are you looking for additional items? Is that we-
There are.
If there are any, okay. Do we have anything else we'd like to address? I don't have any.
Through the mayor, I just wanted to have, now, keep going back, it's not clear in my mind yet, and I want to make sure that I have that, that pension stabilization trust. Because I think I'm confusing the 500 that we're proposing for this fiscal, for 1819, is going to come out of the trust, correct?
It would. And it would reduce, if you will, the balance down to 2.2 million?
Okay, so it's coming out of that?
It would come out of this money, yes.
Okay.
And for me, my recommendations that I bring forward to the council, it's a delicate balance between, okay, we don't want to pay 7% interest on a $70 million debt indefinitely, so we want to whittle it down, but how much is too much to pay? I wouldn't recommend taking the whole 2.7 million, chucking it at the debt to try to bring the debt down and save interest, just because then that limits your flexibility down the road with your ability to deal with a changing economy and still pay CalPERS rates that are doing less.
Then on the very last slide that you had, because that was one of your questions or consideration, right?
Yes.
500 general fund, ADP, and then CalPERS, a total, so the total is that?
The total includes water, wastewater-
Oh.
-and SaaS's share. Because in order to pay down the miscellaneous liability-
Uh huh.
All the employees that are covered under the miscellaneous actuarial plan, everybody needs to pay their fair share.
Got it.
And that's why I'm recommending a miscellaneous payment, is because we can get more bang for our buck and save more interest, versus if we did safety, 500,000 equals 500,000 for the general fund.
Right. Oh, that makes sense now to me. Okay, what you're saying. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Through the mayor, as far as how we proceed, you and I have been through the budgetary process, I can handle it either way we want. I would ask our council members that, you know, do they need to hear the other two presentations before they can, you know, help provide direction to staff, or what that's going to do to staff, or is how we proceed here?
Right, and that is the question. If we're good for this item, move on to the next ones, or do you want to wait until the end? I don't, doesn't matter to me.
Through the mayor, if you don't mind, if you could read what you have already, that way we can figure out whether there needs to be any additions on this operating budget.
The direction, there was a lot of discussion, so the direction portion coming from the five of you wasn't real clear to me. The UBS Better Lodging Association amount for 127,640, that was getting tabled for further evaluation based upon their coming in and giving you guys a presentation. So that was, in my mind, I marked that as a to-be-determined. For now, it's not to be included in the proposed budget until you've heard their presentation.
Placeholder, if you will.
Okay, so should I-
Just in case it is approved.
Okay, so leave it there for now, pending action.
Right.
Okay. Making sure that I've got agreement.
Are there three nods?
That was my understanding from the beginning, is what we're doing there.
Thank you. The Economic Development Corporation contribution of 52,000 was something else that generated a lot of discussion. I, my understanding, I think, is that that was staying in the proposed budget, but correct me if I'm wrong, please.
I think we were going to let the new city, through the mayor.
I think we were going to let the new city manager determine that position in the administrative department. So I guess we need to budget.
That was a suggestion, not a decision.
Yeah, that was a suggestion.
I would, another placeholder, in my opinion, unless, you have anything to contribute on that one?
I think it needs to be in the budget.
Okay.
The EDC 52,000?
Yes.
Okay. So.
Yes.
Budget?
There's three nods, yeah.
There you go.
There was also discussion as it relates to our Economic Development Public Affairs manager being, remaining in the budget. It is not in the budget now. Is there a desire to add it back?
That's what was discussed earlier, or two of us had discussed it, letting the city manager make the decision.
That's what you were talking about on that one.
Right, that's what I was talking about.
Any thoughts on that?
My thought is, I stand by what we did in the subcommittee, and I think it needs to be defunded at this time, with the possibility of joining the EDC.
I support the recommendation of the budget subcommittee.
I am questioning the decision to remove the Economic Development position in the sense of what we have with the Economic Commission. So I'm just confused on that particular, how that's going to be then folded in if we went to the EDC. So that's, I'm just asking that as a question for clarification in that decision to move in that direction. Was that taken into consideration?
Well, it's kind of a little bit different strategies here, but Economic Development Commission is exactly that. We already, we're familiar with the mission, what we're, just basically expanding their purview, specific to issues involving UBS City interests. Economic Development Commission, the 52,000, will be, not only they would assist us, but it's more of a broad, community-based approach.
No, I understand the EDC part of it, the Economic Development Corporation, their role, when Brenda Strandig gave us a presentation on that, I'm clear on that. I'm just, it's not clear to me in how that, the corporation, the EDC corporation, then would utilize our commission that we have currently. And as we are modifying and moving funds around, how that would change that particular role of our commission.
I know that it's necessarily a supplant. The EDC commission, it's more UBS City-specific, so they will work in cooperation and communicate with one another, just like they would have done now if we were still part of a membership program. But, so that would be, are you saying that we should have one or the other, not both?
I'm just asking how that decision was determined by both of you, because the corporation has a board, and it already has an existing group where they meet to discuss regional issues. And so I think we're considering that that's, we're going to be part of that. And how is, would our commission group then potentially cost us more money for Brenda to work with them, to fold them in, or would they be part of that board? You know, that's just-
It's separate.
So who would run that particular commission?
That's yet to be determined.
Okay, so that wasn't decided.
That's yet to be determined, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I stand, I think the city council, excuse me, the city manager needs to make that decision, so I would hope that that administrative decisions in that particular area, I think the city incoming city manager needs to make that decision.
All right, okay. Good point, very tough decision, very interesting decision, but you have three nods.
The community coordinator position was discussed. I think we have direction to remove that.
Yes. For now, unless you have commentary on that.
The only, my only thinking behind that, at the time that we discussed it in the subcommittee, it seemed to be the logical fit. But after listening tonight and having consideration over the last few weeks, that one position, I think, really needs to wait until the city manager, the new city manager is here. And let them best describe what they need in support for that position, that's not at the level that we had, but yet in that supportive role to accomplish the mission. So I would be fine with leaving that to the new city manager, but I honestly think it needs to be in the budget, because if it's not in the budget, then we're not, we're basically telling the new city manager, you can decide what you want, but you've got no money. So I think we could leave it in the budget, but not filled or done anything until the new city manager gets here and it can be brought back, much like what we're doing with the tourism.
The new city manager decides, not necessarily necessary, and they can adapt to fulfill those needs that we anticipated for that position. So be it, in the moment, so we can deal with that.
They would, yeah, roll back into the general fund.
So I, you want to keep it or not? The bugs following me.
Keep it in the budget, because, you know, no issue with leaving it to be utilized by the new city manager. But if we do not budget for something, then we're telling the new city manager, tell us what you need, but there's no money. So the prudent thing to do is to budget the 70, I think it was 71,000 or 81,000, leave it there, and let the new city manager determine what he needs, and let it be a placeholder.
The person, yeah.
Or she, the person, he, she, the new city manager. But we need to fund it in the budget, or we're not setting them up.
I would be okay with having the money set aside, but with not giving a specific title. Because I think that then that person can decide what that role may look like.
I think we have to give a title to live with money there, you can't leave it-
Or you can put it in, what is it, professional development or services or other materials. You can keep the money in that line item, so.
So be it.
So be it.
So be it.
Thank you.
So it stays.
Stays, for now. But we're not going to worry about, we're not going to include the title.
No title.
All right, that's fine.
And through the mayor?
Yes.
I think we need to find out, too, the Economic Development- I think we need to find out to the Economic Development Corps if, uh, they're gonna take our seven-member board. Is it going to be an extra fee or if it's all going to be part of the fee? And we, because we might not have money in the future for that also.
Separate.
Separate?
Separate.
So we have money already separated for that.
The EDC is separate, just like planning commission and everything, youth commission, everything else, it's separate.
Okay.
Through the mayor, just clarification, this commission, like the planning commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, these are all advisory bodies to the city council, correct?
Yes.
Thanks.
The last item I had on my list that we talked about earlier was the building maintenance worker and whether that position should stay in or be removed.
I think it's, it should stay in. It's a valuable asset to our community. Uh, we can get things done, save on paperwork, especially if there's, something needs to be fixed ASAP. It, it could be done immediately. We don't have to wait for, uh, you know, a bid to come in and a contractor to do the work. And it is, it was in the, it wasn't, it was here in the past, and it is a valuable asset for keeping these buildings up in our community and our city, for our city buildings.
Yeah, right.
Through the mayor, I was the one that raised the question about it. I'm, I was satisfied with Ben Moody's answer in regards to the justification.
Now, I'm gonna look to my colleagues on both sides and ask, did I miss anything? Okay, apparently I did. Um, the flagpole that we've included in the general fund, got back. Can I remove that item? Because we're adding it in other ways.
We have the CDBG for playground.
That's playground.
You already got that?
Yes, I have noted that.
And then requested a, via a summation of the community contributions, a request on file.
Bring that back on the June fourth meeting.
All right. That's all I've got written down.
Uh, removing the Subuca position because they've hired it.
Yes.
Directly. Got that. Okay. Lynn, did you have anything? Okay. I think we're, yes, I've got that. Thank you.
I have.
I know, right? They put on a budget presentation one time where it was called stump the chump. You've officially stumped me. You've got me.
Through the mayor, um, going to your, uh, consideration items, um, the top ones I have no issue with. The very last one, um, Mr. Mayor and the rest of the council, uh, if you're interested in, in, uh, holding that one back. And the reason is, is we're about to sit down with the public and talk about purse. And I think it would be putting the cart in front of the horse without having those discussions, without the public's understanding and input as to what we're doing. Because last year, when you made that payment, it was September or October anyway. You know, I, I would just, I just don't want us to authorize and, you know, July one, we make a, you know, half million dollar payment, and we go sit down with the public on the seventh or eighth, and it's kind of a mute point. I, I think the public needs their, their voices heard and this, and I think that we just need to hold off on making the payment at this time until we go through the process.
When was the intent to make the payment, write the check?
Um, we have no time certain to do it because it's an additional discretionary payment. We have to notify our actuary well in advance of making it and set up the timing with them. We need to withdraw the funds from the pension trust fund. It takes time. So what I would propose is at this juncture, leaving it in the budget, but directing me to hold off until the pension committee has met and it's been discussed more in detail, not to proceed with actually taking action and doing anything with it. Because we do have it built into the budget at this point. I would hate to take it out, only to put it back in in three to six months. But you can direct us not to make any payments, additional discretionary payments beyond the prepayment in July. That makes sense, and I think I have your authorization for that. Um, but as far as this goes, we can hold off until you direct me to do so.
How long does it take to, if you're gonna make the payment as soon as possible, how long that would take? If we say go ahead and do it?
We wouldn't do it till after July first because we want it to, we have, it's built in in next year's budget. So I don't have the authority to make it before that anyway.
So you need a month's notice?
Yeah.
Okay, then that would be okay with holding off and speaking with our group? We're not meeting until July, so.
Like two weeks, but yes.
All right, thank you.
And we have how long to make the payment? We have until December thirty first?
Extra payment.
Yeah, we can do it anytime before June thirty.
But if we made it now, it'd save us interest combined from now till June thirty of next year? If we made it, if we made it after July first?
Yeah. It would save seven percent interest, and that's what I look at. It's a balancing act. I hate to pay purse interest on something that gives us nothing.
You're here.
So if I'm hearing correctly, then my direction is to hold off on making the payment, but I'm okay to leave it in the budget as it's proposed.
That's what I, that I would concur, so.
Duly noted. Duly noted, thank you.
Mayor?
Uh oh.
I would like to note that this is Robin's final budget workshop before her retirement at the end of the year, and so I just want to say she did, she and her team did a phenomenal job. And thank you very much, Robin.
Thank you, Robin. Always do a good job. All right, we're back.
We're back on?
Thank you, Ben.
All right, so what's doing? Um, you know, I'd always like to, to say, this is one of the best jobs is, and especially dealing with the CIP because all of this, um, wrestling over money and where it goes, I get to spend it. And so I would say I get one of the best jobs is when I get to work, talk about the CIP and look forward to the next projects I get to put out for the town. So, um, so with this, um, this is a review of the nineteen twenty capital improvement budget. And it's really the focus on priority projects for street, water, wastewater, and, um, facilities. It's, it's really a high-level, um, focus on the priority projects, piggybacking off the transportation workshop in February and the goals and priority workshop in March. And so it's really intended to be an interactive discussion, and please ask questions as we're going through it. So, um, so with this, um, it's definitely hard to read with this, um, with the screen and everything's small, but it's just kind of really a snapshot of North Uba City. Um, the stuff in colors basically shows different projects that are funded through that CIP. So it's existing projects and new projects to show how they're scattered out around the city from striping projects, ground, um, water well abandonments to, um, projects at, um, the police department, civic center field, to the north plant and across the city. With that, that's, uh, the south half of Uba City. So I'm gonna start off with getting into streets. So our biggest priority project that's funded out of the streets and road CIP is the Fifth Street Bridge Replacement Project. Uh, everybody's aware of the Fifth Street Bridge Replacement Project. It's, um, well, well, let me back up a little bit. So with, with the streets, um, and road CIP for nineteen and twenty, for the nineteen twenty fiscal year budget, we've programmed two point four million dollars. And so that's really a base, um, budget. There's no big grants, there's no seventy million dollar bridge coming in. That's really what your TDA, your transportation tax, and your SB one money that's coming in. Um, and so it's really a base year. And so typical projects in the street cover maintenance, um, which includes striping projects, marking, drainage improvements, stormwater activities, traffic signal work, and various road rehab and improvement projects. So really, when you look at that long list there in the streets and roads section of the CIP, that's pretty much what those, that section is covering. And so when then we get into the, the priority projects, we have the Fifth Street Bridge Replacement Project. It's currently under construction with a July twenty twenty completion date. Um, July, August is what we're shooting for. Near-term work involves constructing the approach, finishing the approach work on both Uba City and Marysville side. Bridge three widening, this is, uh, been determined as a priority project, and staff is currently working through finalizing those plans and specs, relocating three residences, um, through relocation services. We're getting ready to demo the six forty Brown House here in the next week or so. You'll see that one come down. And then basically, the plan is to come to, finalize those plans and specs and come to council sometime this summer, fall. Um, and we approve those plans and specs, and with a funding strategy that, that we could then put out the bid in, um, in the winter. Franklin Avenue Pedestrian Improvement Project, this is a, a nice, um, little improvement project from Franklin Avenue between Palora and Gray. Um, it's got a mixed bag of money, um, where we're using ATP grant money, some county portions, uh, some SB one money, and then other local sources of money. We're, um, we've just sent that in for the request for approval from Caltrans, and we're hoping within the next month or so, we'll get word back to give us the okay to bid it. So that'd be, um, we're looking forward to a summer construction if it comes through. Um, and then we got the Sutter Bike Path Closure, which is a, which is a big project, two and a half million dollars. We're working through, um, finalizing the, um, property acquisition, um, for the project. And then also, um, SACOG programmed the money in twenty twenty one, I believe is what. So we're working through the design right now and then setting ourselves up to do that, that bike. Bike, uh, the, basically it's the bike path extension from Hooper Road to Harder Parkway and then doing a shared path along Harder Parkway between Beute House Road and Highway twenty. And then I just had a road maintenance, a placeholder in here this year. Typically, that fluctuates from half a million to a million, depending on available TDA money and what other projects we program. This year, we have it at five hundred thousand, um, just because the way our TDA allotment came in and different projects, um, it wasn't a big year for road rehab. And so as we've talked in the transportation workshop, that's always a big struggle where you're looking at that seven to eight million dollar need. Water CIP. So the water plant off of North Gate and Live Oak Boulevard. We're proposing a seven point seven million dollar budget with a large portion of that seven point seven million dollars this year coming from approximately three million dollar, um, Calio, OES, FEMA, anticipated funding for damage to the low lift road going up to, um, along the river north of the Feather River Parkway up into the low lift intake. There was storm damage, damage with Orville incident, and so of that seven point seven, three million is really a placeholder for our application to get funded. We're still waiting to actually, um, to see if that comes in or not, comes to fruition. So projects in the waterfront typically cover, uh, maintenance items, which is water meter installation, fire hydrant, relocations, um, distribution, um, repairs, recoding water storage reservoirs, and then we have improvement projects with groundwater wells and hydromatic tanks. And so with the priority projects for nineteen twenty, one of the big ones that we've been trying to, um, help with the system is the pressure surge relief facility, which basically is gonna put hydromatic tanks at, um, at the treatment plant and then possibly in the distribution system to handle those spikes when we have that intermittent power loss. And it basically has this water hammer effect on our system that's causing a lot of damage throughout the system and leaks and compounding problems with maintenance. So, and then, uh, that one we've, we're getting, my, my understanding is we're getting close to design, working through the design element, and, um, hopefully this year, we come up, we finalize that design and then we're able to bring a project forward. The cellular water meter replacement, this is a, a nice project where we're gonna swap out those radio reads with cell, um, heads, which gives more options for users to know, um, how much water they're using on a, on a day, day-to-day basis, and we had a four million dollar grant, um, repayment grant with that. So the cost is, it's eight million dollar project with four million dollar, um, forgiveness loan. Berry School Waterline Transmission, uh, the project plans and specifications have been sent into, um, the state, and they're working through that funding agreement. We're hoping, we're pushing to get the state to move forward with that funding agreement so we could push that project out. Second groundwater well, four million dollar project. This is, uh, really in its infancy of a multi-year project. It's to put a new, um, second, uh, a new groundwater well, um, at the water treatment plant. We've received about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from, um, the Board of Reclamation towards that grant, and, um, and we're working through the environmental process right now. And then, um, then we will, we have funding agreement with the, the Board of Reclamation with the feds, and then we'll move into the design process. And so, um, some of these are self-explanatory with water treatment, electrical, and instrumentation improvements. Uh, it's real similar to what we're doing at the wastewater plant, but basically we're looking at starting, um, updating the systems to, um, so they all talk the same language, they, they all have the same software, um, and they, uh, they meet the needs, the current needs since they're old and outdated. And they, they meet the different capacity with fiber, um, and data and, and different processing, new control units to those, um, variable speed motors and different control systems. And so with that, there's a SCADA master plan, um, to kind of look at like a master plan document on how to get there, and then to start putting money towards, um, doing those improvements. The new project, the highlight on here is the Plumas Water Tower Maintenance Project. They call that out. It's a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars, and, and what that's programmed to fund is the Plumas Street Water Tower, it's, it's, um, it's rusting. It has, um, some equipment on there that needs to take, be taken off. And so what we're looking at is basically the cost to go up there, clean it, patch it, prep it, and prime it and paint it. And so with it being, um, so it's tall, uh, it, it's expensive. And so we typically have a recoding reservoirs fund and a, um, and a maintenance fund for, um, recoding reservoirs, and then, uh, funds are programmed and maintaining recoding water storage reservoirs. We propose to basically use, uh, the, the funds, instead of funding those accounts typically at, at the half million mark where, um, we reduce some of those funds in order to program this.
Through the mayor, on the water tower, Ben, I know that's gonna be all cosmetic because the water tower has been used for many years. Does that count, and the one thirty five, does that count in the artwork that council would like to be put up there?
It does not. It does not. So that would be separate. Um, if, if, if in the future, the city council wants to move forward with, um, artwork or repainting that, then we would have to consider that price at that time and how we would fund it.
So when?
So this is just gonna strictly, uh, maintain that structure with basically repainting it. You're gonna get a paint job out of it.
Okay. Now, when we do this, this could be a whole bunch of scaffolding and stuff up on that, isn't there?
You know, my understanding from, uh, our project manager has got quotes, is there's really just tall lifts. There's really super tall lifts, and, um, there'll definitely have to be some coordination on how we set up in, in Plumas Street where it's a tight situation on how you get a lift that tall and, and get traffic around, up and around. But it's a, it's a tall lift.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
All right, wastewater CIP. So the nineteen twenty program budget amount is three point six million dollars. Um, again, this is a base amount with no anticipated grants or special funding, um, coming into play this year. So the primary projects there, the one that is going on right now is the wastewater treatment facility improvement project, close to twenty three million dollars. As you know, this project involves improvements to the headworks, digester, electrical and dewatering system improvements. It's ongoing, um, currently. New Outfall, that's a big project. Um, I'm just showing that as, as a project that we're currently working through. That budget amount isn't until future years. Right now, we've budgeted, um, design. And so we're working through the design options and design costs with Jacobs Engineering to try to figure out the most efficient and reliable location to put that diffuser into the river for a new spot. Waste water system master plan, we are, um, that number, I want to say that's a carryover number from before. We've actually contracted with West Jost Engineering for, for less money. That's been the, the council, I believe, with the, with the award to, uh, West Jost, and we're working through that right now. And then we have the, uh, the sewer collection rehabilitation replacement. This is just really a placeholder to show how much money we're, um, programming into different, um, where we split it into the collection system and then into improvements for the wastewater facility.
Through the mayor? Uh, Ben, by any chance, are we, uh, are backyard lines that are not that great? Are we, uh, making future plans and budgeting to replace those lines? Put them out in front of the houses instead of the backyard? Is that on our list by any chance?
So this is where that million dollars, a portion of that money goes to. It goes into the, um, we use the capital, we're calling it the capital fund.
Okay.
And so a portion of that money gets, it gets put in here into the capitalization fund and then also in the, um, uh, recurring collection and rehabilitation system projects where we're stockpiling the money. I mean, every year we're doing a project and we're trying to, and what we've done with the collections team is we've identified, um, priority spots for them.
Yes.
And the backyard mains off of, off of Queens, um, the north area up there have definitely been identified is in need just because of the, the original pipe type was a concrete and is just crumbling. And so that area is definitely on our hit list as we work towards getting it improved.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, Facility CIP. So, um, this is a, this is one of, um, one of my favorite CIPs because you really see, um, parks and parks to the community and then also you see the, um, improvements to our facilities that affect staff. And so it's, it's, it's a, it's a funding source that really has some impact that people notice. And so with that, I want to go into it eyes wide open on a lot of these projects. It's always difficult with the facilities projects because they're general fund, funded. They're programmed with general fund dollars that are, um, obviously limited. But as we work through this, and so you're not able to use utility dollars or road dollars. They're specifically from the general fund typically are limited resources. And then, and then when we've had these, um, they get programmed over multiple years for bigger projects. So, um, prices continue to increase and then there's always contingencies or, or for them because, uh, people are always trying to get the best that they can for that, for that project. And so, uh, right now, this is how we have these projects programmed. And but with that, I want to make sure, um, we're aware, you know, this is a budget amount. We're still working through the design and going out to bid, but most likely the, the real number when they come in would be a little bit different. And specifically for Harder Parkway Park, we had an $800,000 grant. And so to maximize that grant 50 cents on the dollar, it'd be best to put out a 1.6 million dollar project. And then when you include contingency, project management, all of a sudden you're up and around a 1.8 million dollar project and we've only got 1.538 programmed. So that's where you get into, um, Brad does a great job leveraging, um, outside resources, um, to bring in other funding sources and then also, um, finding that balance of, of what we, um, what we build. So, so with that, um, the Harder Parkway Park, we're working through that and Brad's working on the outreach and confirming what's going to be in the park over the next six months or so. And then, um, and then we'll go out, finalize the design, go out to bid and then we'll have a hard number when we come back to, to say, hey, this is what it's going to cost once we come back. With that, the Feather River Parkway Phase Two project, that's another, uh, great project. It's kind of been on the books for five years or so. We've, we've had the, we've, we've got the grant, but in order to get the permits from the core and being within that river, um, boundary, it's taken a long time to get the permits. And so we've recently just been approved and we're actually working to come back to, uh, council June 18th to authorize, um, the bid for that project. And so we'll have a, we, we think that number, um, is good based on our current engineer's estimate, but we'll have a, we'll have more detail on that when we come back in here and, um, after we bid and come back in a couple of months. Fire Station Number Two, this is another big one. Um, right now, my understanding, uh, from our project manager and working with fire, that, uh, they've been working on this remodel of, uh, Fire Station Number Two to add a dorm and, and dorm room and do an update from, um, the facility that I believe was, from Bill was built in 1978 and originally, um, started operations in about 81. And, um, and so it's in need of a remodel. Um, staff's been working through it. Um, it never gets cheaper. They've tried to cut everything from the paint to ADA portions that they, they don't think, um, might be necessary. And they've really got to a point where they have this project that we're thinking with the current bid environment is about 1.5. And so, um, the, the idea is that we're going to, um, push really hard to cut everything out and work to embed it and tell, you know, let bidders know that we got a tight budget and, and see what comes back. But, um, this is one of those projects that they have pretty much shelf ready to, um, put out the bid, um, but we're short, um, we're potentially short and that doesn't include project management and contingency. Police Department Workstations, um, this is a new for this year with, uh, it has to do with partitions in the detectives and our, and the, um, evidence room is my understanding? In the dispatch, excuse me. So partitions in the dispatch and it has to do with, um, evidence and different things that, um, for privacy concerns of what's going on. And then, uh, the miscellaneous improvements, this is really the, um, combination of both the $50,000 for City Hall improvements that are annually budgeted and the $195,000 that was put in the budget for this year for, um, uh, improvements to buildings and grounds, which is, uh, basically there's certain items that we put, it's kind of a catchall for problems that happen across the 17 different facilities from roof leaks to, um, mildew damage on the eaves at the senior center to, um, having leaks within the, uh, fixing doors out front at City Hall for various, for various items. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
Um, Ben, I, I appreciate how you have, um, I like your tables, very easy to follow. So thank you for doing that. The Feather River, um, Parkway Phase Two, can you tell me more about that?
So it's, it's a project, um, so Feather River Phase One, so just north of the 10th Street Bridge. So if you come off the off-ramp, um, it's kind of a, a little bit of an awkward turn on Von Geldron and then Sumner where it pops up on the levee. And you, um, from the, from basically from the 10th Street Bridge north, it's, um, it's the phase one of our park that was constructed approximately five years ago. I'm looking for Brad here.
Oh, he just stepped out.
I'm trying to figure out when we did it, but it's been, it's been in place for a little while. And so with Phase Two, that would be directly connected to that north end and then run farther north from there.
Here he is. Oh, from there to peas? Okay.
It involves, uh, walking, walking path, but, um, uh, different pedestrian improvements. We're talking about, um, the Feather River Parkway, Brad, and, uh, they stumped me a little bit. I just looked at the plans, but there's, there's a boardwalk that goes out to the river. There's, um, pedestrian paths and different paths, uh, that are built out on the old city sewer system, the old sewer ponds that are out there that are all covered in brush. So it does a lot of clearing and grubbing and, and really cleaning up that so there's more paths.
It also includes a bathroom and then a gazebo at the north end and then removing some of the berms, uh, to provide more wetland drainage area and then, uh, picnic areas and informative signs so that people walking around can see, um, the different wildlife and things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the mayor, I guess I, I'm going to ask an obvious question, given what's going on in the river bottoms right now and the, the volume of questions we get in regards to the sanitation and the debris and everything else. How are we planning on addressing all that as this project continues to move forward?
Council Boom Garden, uh, we've, uh, had the Feather River Parkway Project Phase One. I don't know if, I apologize for missing part of the question, but I, um, so we've already put 1.4 million into that piece of property. Uh, we maintain that piece of property. There are staff down there every day. We have ordinances because it is a park, uh, as far as any camping, uh, we enforce that down there. Um, and, uh, staff, uh, again, is, is, we have eyes and ears down there every day. Um, one of the interesting, uh, partnerships that we've had with, uh, the Sutter County, um, One Stop is that within four weeks after the high water event, there was some federal funding that came in and that the, they, we were asked if we wanted to participate, um, with, uh, acquiring people, uh, a work program that was created. And so for the last, I'm not exaggerating, for, since the high water event minus one or two months, we have had, uh, six people and one supervisor down there, um, raising, what I call raising the skirt on the trees. Um, if you have not been down there in the last year, it looks tremendously different. And so I say that because it is getting a lot of use, um, in addition to once we are done with the, um, approximately 1.7 million dollar project, uh, you will start to see a lot of runs, uh, fun runs take place, community runs take place down there as well. Um, and I anticipate what will probably happen is that, um, if, uh, an organization wants to do a fun run, um, we're going to ask them that they do it down there. Um, and, uh, the recreation staff will be putting on a fun run in the spring, uh, to kind of show our community how it can be done. But there's a lot of, a variety of components, but it's a long answer. But to ask, to answer your question, um, we have very little problems down there because we are very active down there.
Thanks. I, I guess that my concern and, and probably this goes to Chief Landon as well. Uh, I know we made a deliberate effort not to put restroom facilities in, in city parks because that has a tendency to draw stuff that perhaps isn't the nicest for that neighborhood. We've put restroom facilities down here. It becomes public land. We can't move folks who have chosen to habitate down there off of public land because we don't have a temporary shelter yet. Um, what kind of burden is this going to place on, on the police department to enforce this stuff? I, I would hate to put your folks in harm's way, but.
Great.
He wants you to answer it.
One of the, I do. One of the tools we have is the ordinance, you know, as it relates to parks. Um, and so all of our parks, everyone, everyone has to be out of our parks after the sun has gone down. Now, the enforcement part, I'll let the chief handle that one.
I think raising the skirt and all the issues, there's a, there's a lot of cleanliness that goes there and increases the visibility where we can drive through there. The more accessibility for the patrol vehicles to get down there by doing the improvements here will allow us to be down there more frequently. But I think the biggest issue that we can address is the fact that it is a park and as a park, we can, we can, uh, control the hours where people can be there. So the camping ordinance, although it's not a, no camping ordinance, there's no being in the park after dark and before sunlight or sunup. So it allows us an ordinance to enforce it. That allows us a mechanism to go down there and enforce it.
Any other, any other questions?
I did get an answer to this, uh, from an email I sent, but maybe a, a status on the Union Pacific Railroad property. I know that there's a little bit of money put aside for this, but I mean, I, I happen to have some firsthand knowledge of this is a going nowhere thing, um, and it's general fund money.
You know, I'll defer to Diana on that one as she walks up. I, I know she put the email response together and very knowledgeable on this longstanding project.
So that is 19 years of my life, working with Union Pacific. I wish I could say that we are further ahead than when we were then. I would say Union Pacific's further ahead in terms of identifying the contamination within the right of way. Um, so what that account pays for is we have an attorney that we utilize that checks in with Union Pacific maybe once every six months, just to see the status of, um, their interest in selling the right of way to the city at a reasonable price, recognizing that considerable amount of money is going to have to go into remediating it. Uh, Union Pacific's had a lot of different project managers. They have branches. The environmental branch doesn't necessarily talk to the right of way branch. So there's differing opinions in terms of what the property is worth. And so over the years, we've done, um, different opinions of what the value is. We've coordinated with them in trying to encourage them to sell off pieces of it, um, particularly pieces that there are adjacent property owners that are interested in. And, um, we've also encouraged them to work directly with those adjacent property owners to try to come up with a deal just to move it forward. We have not been successful in the negotiations and it continues to, um, to just kind of linger out there.
We have been unsuccessful as well.
Any more questions? Good. All right. Thank you very much, Ben. Thank you. All right, welcome.
All right. So before I get started, I want to introduce somebody in the audience and that is Phil Marler. Phil, if you could raise your hand. So Phil has been, uh, he has been promoted to utility superintendent effective June 8th. And so, um, he will be the person that's the mid-manager over the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment facility. And he was previously the water distribution supervisor. So it's always great to promote from within and I'm really looking forward to working with Phil in his new capacity as the utility superintendent. And I also wanted to note, he's on vacation this week and he came in specifically for this. So I'm very appreciative of that.
Is he related to the famous Marler that used to work for the city?
He is a direct descendant of that famous Marler.
Hold that against him.
All right. So what I'm going to present to you tonight is water and wastewater utility rates. So the purpose of rates is to ensure adequate revenues in the water and wastewater enterprise funds for operation and maintenance, debt service coverage and capital projects. For background, in April of 2016, council adopted the water and wastewater rate study. It proposed adjustments to the city's water and wastewater rates over the next five years and it covers rates through fiscal year 2021. In June of that same year, council adopted, uh, water and wastewater ordinance. One key thing noted in those ordinances that it provides for council review of the rates on an annual basis as part of the budgetary, um, review process. So tonight at the budget workshop, we're presenting the rates with the intention of, in the past, it's been to have a July 1st implementation. That's something we can talk about tonight. And then also council set, uh, by authority to be able to set rates by resolution. And then on January of this year, we had a water and wastewater workshop where we went over not only the rates, but connection fees and background in terms of the plants and condition. But at that workshop, council directed staff to present three options for rating, for rates for fiscal year 1920. One thing that I'd like to note is when you look at water conservation compared to 2013, um, what you can see on this slide particularly is something that we've all felt this last winter is that the winter of 1819 was really a wet winter. And so we have had significant conservation, um, over these past few months. So you have March at 35.8%, April at 34.4%. Looking at February, 2017 is a 4.6%. This year is 20.7%. If you compare 2018 to 2017, you can see that 2018, for the most part, was significantly higher than the same month in 2017. So what does that do? Well, when you look at water sales, we had a council adopt a 10% rate increase last year. What we're really expecting to see is approximately 6.5% higher revenues as compared to last year for water sales. Large portion of that's due to the high amount of rainfall. So you saw people weren't, you know, turning on their irrigation as, uh, soon as they normally do or letting it go as long as they did last year. In terms of wastewater, a little bit different, expected to be approximately 6.1% higher as compared to an 8% rate increase. So we're not projecting to hit the mark in terms of where we thought with revenues, but it's still, um, still significantly higher than where we were last fiscal year. As a reminder, for the water rate history, uh, this is just for a one inch meter. You can see that rate studies were adopted in 2011 and again in 2016. And so therefore you see particularly this last rate study, dramatic increases in the rates. Large part of that is due to the drought and the, uh, loss of revenues over that time period. And so we were, um, trying to make up for lost time basically with this last rate study. And then wastewater, very similarly, um, you see rate increases, uh, that went into effect after rate studies were adopted in 2011 and 2016. So the three options that council directed staff to bring forward, option one was a zero increase and that's what finance included in the budget, is that they didn't assume an increase was going to go forward. That way, um, the budget was based upon kind of, you, you can either call it worst case or best case scenario, depending on who you are, but a 0% rate increase. Option two, and, and these don't have to be the same, you could do any menu of options here, but one was a three and a half percent increase in water, a 4% increase in wastewater and then also a 7% increase in water and 8%. in water and 8% increase in wastewater. So how did we come up with 7% for water and 8% of wastewater? Last year, when we were looking at the rates and we presented the rate increases to council, we were projecting for this fiscal year that we would need a 7% rate increase for water and an 8% rate increase for wastewater. And so therefore earlier this year when we were doing the workshop, council said, okay, show us what that scenario looks like, but then also give us a couple other options. So we did the 0% and then the split. So the proposed water rates, so the current rate, I'll just go over the one-inch, is $35.84. So of course, a 0% increase is just going to match. And I really struggled with putting in a column for a 0% increase, but I wanted to be very clear that it really is a 0% increase. 3.5% increase would result in a rate of $37.09. A 7% increase would result in $38.35. And just to note, the amount approved through the Prop 218 process was $41.01. For wastewater, the current rate is $52.96 for a single-family home. 0% increase would cause it to remain the same. 3.5% or 4% increase would be $55.08. An 8% increase would be $57.20. And then the Prop 218 amount is $59.34. It should be noted that last year was the first year that council set wastewater rates below the approved 218 amount. Prior to that, they had been set at the 218 amount. And then for waters, a little bit different, previous years, council had set the rates below the 218 amount. And then proposed wastewater rates, this is for our industrial customers. If you recall, their bills are based upon volume, total suspended solids and BOD. And so similarly, their rates would improve, increase based upon whatever council recommends. So just to provide a bill comparison for a one-inch water service, which is typical for a single-family dwelling, under the current scenario for water and wastewater, if you have an annual usage of about 15 HCF, if you recall, one HCF is 748 gallons, your bill's $88.80. So when you get a bill today and you live in Yuba City, if you're an average water user, then you get a bill of $88.80. If you did a 3.5% increase of water, 4% increase of sewer, your bill would go up to $92.17. If you had a 7% increase in water and an 8% increase in sewer, your bill would go up to $95.55. If you were to increase the rates up to the 218 approved amount, your bill would go up to $100.35. So there's a wide range there. Yes, sir.
Mayor, you said $95. It says $92.17 on the, on the, oh, 7%, I'm sorry. Never mind. I was looking for, I'm sorry.
So wide range in terms of options for council. I'm not looking for a recommendation tonight. This is just something to consider and I'll be coming back on June 18th in terms of the direction that council wants to go. If, if council wants to provide a, a direction tonight, that's great. I would just say that whatever is, if you chose to do zero increase or even to go with the 3.5% increase in water, 4% increase in sewer, what it does is it takes away from funding projects. Because the bottom line, you still have to fund O&M, operation and maintenance. You still have a defined amount for debt service. So what it really impacts is your ability to fund projects. With that said, we will be coming forward within the next, we would recommend within the next year to update the rate studies. We finished the water master plan. And as I've told you before, the cost of implementation of that plan is huge. And we're now doing the wastewater master plan. And so it's not a matter of, you know, you're not going to be able to fund all the projects. So it's a matter of the comfort level in terms of what council wants to move forward with. I would say that if you're looking for staff's recommendation, my recommendation would be at a minimum to do a 3.5% increase on the water bill and a 4% increase on the sewer bill, just to keep up with CPI in terms of those costs that, you know, if you recall, in terms of water and wastewater, salaries and benefits are on the smaller portion of those costs. When it comes to O&M, it's more of the power and, you know, things that are more subject to CPI adjustments. And so staff's recommendation would be at a minimum do the 3.5% increase in water bill, 4% increase in sewer.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
Diana, on the wastewater side, the biosolids contract was brought up to us last council meeting. Are those fees counting that in for paying the, would they be counting the cost, the additional cost that we're going to be getting here in the near future?
These rates do not take into account the anticipated increase for biosolid disposal. Just in running the numbers that they originally provided in their proposal, if I recall correctly, we'd be going from approximately $290,000 to about half a million dollars. That's in year one. You know, recology has talked about perhaps a phased-in approach to get to market rate for the actual disposal cost. So I would expect in future years, that cost is going to go up. So these current rates don't take that into account. You know, when you're talking $210,000 roughly for, and it wouldn't be spread over the entire fiscal year. So for the fiscal year, it'd be a little bit less than that because it won't start until October 1. Your, your current revenues could address that, but you would not be able to withstand particularly any increases long-term without having significant impact on your revenues.
Thank you, Diana.
Through the mayor, do the Prop 218 limits, will that, if you add the biosolids, are those affected by the Prop 218 limits or is that a separate category?
No, that is affected by, so the Prop 218 limit is the max you can charge for rates. So regardless of what you have going into that, whatever you're setting as your rates has to cover all of those costs, those operational costs.
Thanks. And Diana, we don't really even have, we have a ballpark of what may, the biosolid contract or the fees may do to our rates. Any ballpark number?
I don't have a ballpark number. I, you know, it just, if I were just to throw something out there, I would say it's going to be a few cents on a per customer basis. You know, for year one, like I said, as future years, as they're phasing it in and that cost increases, it'd be a little bit more.
So a few, so for a few cents, Prop 218 rates would anticipate to, to cover the increase for now at least?
The Prop 218 rates are significantly higher than, if we're going to look at sewer specifically. So the Prop 218 approved amount is $59.34 for a single-family home. The current rate is $52.96. And so you have quite a bit of.
So we still have quite a bit of cushion.
Yeah, you still have quite a bit of cushion there.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
So one of the things that I would like to mention is that normally what we would do is bring the resolutions forward on June 4 so that we can have a July 1 implementation. In working with our consultant who prepares our rate study updates, we have new people involved. And so they are still working on the rate models. Otherwise, I would have some other graphs to show you. And so that's why my proposal is to bring them back June 18th so I can show you specifically how it's going to impact revenues based upon these different scenarios. So with that, I would not propose that we have a July 1 implementation because we would want to be able to give our customers advanced notice that the rates are going to increase. So just to set expectations, I would come forward on June 18th with the additional fiscal information and then council could direct staff in terms of which scenario you want to proceed forward with. And then we would come forward at a later date for adoption of the appropriate resolution and then setting the date that the rates would actually go into effect.
That sounds reasonable to me. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana.